August the 7th, 2007 is now approximately 5:30 PM. This meeting was posted pursuant to Code Section 551.041. As we do all meetings, we will start with an invocation by Pastor Andreas Lewis. And then I'd like to ask Felix Rodriguez and Sal Salinas and the two pledges, please. Andres?
Thank you, let us pray. Dear Father in heaven, Creator of all things seen and unseen, you sent your Son into the world that men might know the truth about sin and salvation. We come before you tonight acknowledging your majesty and our need for your wisdom and grace in the management and rule of Cameron County. Tonight we ask that your grace would be upon our county judge and these county commissioners that they may truly discern the needs of this county, having the wisdom to understand its need and your provision, having the courage to apply wisdom without fear or favor. We ask that those presenting reports in this chamber would do so in spirit and truth, knowing that we must all report to you at the appointed time. We pray that those presenting their petitions before this court would do so without fear, knowing that you honor the honorable and set aside the despicable. At the end of the day, when all is said and done, and all the votes have been taken, we pray that the affairs of this county will be promoted with integrity, so that your blessing and favor would be upon this court and the people of Cameron County. All this we ask in the name above all, in the name of the one who lives to return as king, in the name of your son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Andres. Felix and Sal.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, what a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored protectance flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, and honor thee, indivisible.
I don't have any forms registering for public comment, but I understand there's a couple of folks that would like to say something.
They left them up there.
Felix, I think you want to go first, since you were here first. Just state your name for the record and...
Judge, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen of the public, and comrades in the public as well. I am joined with your Cameron County Veteran Service Officer, Sal Salinas, and we are here quite frankly to thank you for the support that you have given us. I am Felix M. Rodriguez, I am the District 18 Commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. This District 18 covers every Veterans of Foreign Wars post between Brownsville, Hebronville, and Laredo. And we've come before you before and to request and solicit your support on behalf of a resolution that we submitted to our three South Texas congressional, as congressman I should say. You all approved it unanimously. And we've come before you again, and it is time to thank you for the wonderful work and the unsuffice work that you do on behalf of our veterans here in Cameron County. What you are doing is not limited to Cameron County, it involves all of deep south Texas actually. It involves a 24-county area that would be serviced by a hospital, that is the object of that House Resolution 538. Judge Cuskos, I want to thank you. The taxpayer is realizing a return on the investment the taxpayer made on your trip to Washington DC. I was fortunate to be one of the delegations, one of the persons in that delegation that went to DC. Of course, everybody knows by now that you were successful. When I say you, you and County Judge, Idaug County Judge JD Salinas. Both of you were successful in bringing home the bacon, so to speak, with reference to the levies, the levy problem that we have here. You have shown initiative in doing a preemptive strike, okay, to fix the levies before we have a Katrina problem like we did in New Orleans. Part of that, part of the, part of the reason, one of the reasons why we went with you in that delegation was so that we could use your influence and your muscle, so to speak, when we went before these congressmen that will be really deciding the fate of House Resolution 538. I saw you and County Judge JD Salinas and a couple of our county commissioners from Idaug County in action. You were very professional. You did a wonderful job of convincing the people that we spoke with. It was a whirlwind trip. You did a wonderful job of representing the county, Cameron County, and JD Salinas, Idaug County respectively. We came home with a commitment, a commitment from those congressmen that they would do their best and their utmost to convince other congressmen that a veterans' hospital is sincerely, sincerely I should say, that is very, very much in need here in Rio Grande Valley. And I should say deep south Texas actually, because I was being premature in saying Rio Grande Valley. Quite frankly, we don't care where it is, within the 24-county area, just as long as we get that hospital. Sal, please join me, please interject at any point here, I have that tension for hogging the microphone. But I think that, again, that this is a team effort. This is a team effort that we have undertaken here. We have, we have every veterans' service organization involved in this effort. That includes, of course, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the American Legion, the Military Order of the Purple Heart, America's Last Patrol, the Catholic War Veterans, disabled American veterans, Vietnam Veterans of America, and American Vietnam veterans. So, again, this is a team effort. No one veterans' organization has done more than the other. It's all, we've all been pulling towards the same end. We have been successful. We had Congressman Bob Filner visit with us. This is a commitment that we came back with, that Bob Filner would visit with us here in, in South Texas actually, because he did fly into San Antonio. We had a veterans' rally there in San Antonio. He went on to Del Rio that same day, Sunday, and had another veterans' rally, and drove into Laredo. The following day in the morning, which was yesterday, he did meet with the veterans' organizations there. We came down to, we moved on down to Roma, and it was a successful rally there as well. From Roma, we came down to Donna, and we fit to a packed auditorium there, to a veterans' rally. Quite frankly, I've never seen anything like that. And that's again thanks to your county, your Cameron County Service Officer here and other veterans' representatives from Cameron County, Idaug County, Starr County, Brooks. And we did a wonderful job, I think. And I say we because I was part of that group. Bob Filner left the Rio Grande Valley. He left the Rio Grande Valley ensuring, and we were there yesterday at the conference, the Coliseum here in Brownsville I should say. And he did say that he was going to take that bill, House Resolution 538, from his committee, and he was going to take it to the full House of Representatives floor for a vote. This has never happened. We've never gone this far before. We had Senator John Cornyn visit with us about three, four weeks ago. Senator John Cornyn also committed, along with Kay Bailey Hutchison, that they would sponsor that bill. They would carry our resolution in the Senate simultaneously. We've gone a long way. This is not just a veterans' issue, it's a quality of life issue for veterans' families as well. It's an economic development issue. And for those of us that have vision like you all do, that can see further than the horizon, we look at something, the hospital is just one issue, we look further than the hospital issue. We look at a fully accredited, full four-year medical school further down the line. And we, and we can do it because we have the leadership here. We have the leadership here in Cameron County and Idaug County as well, and surrounding counties. And I just wanted to thank you. If you have any questions, I realize this is a public forum, and you're not obliged to respond, but if there's any questions that I can answer and comments, please feel free. I want to thank you. We are grateful. Veterans of the Rio Grande Valley are grateful to Cameron County and leaders like you.
Well Felix, thank you. But again, I think, I think the efforts that you all have undertaken overshadow anything that I or Judge Salinas have done. But you know, we're there to serve. And I will tell you that this is the farthest this endeavor has ever been. You have a companion bill that was introduced by Cornyn and Hutchison, never been done before. And I think maybe they've all come to realize that these issues are nonpartisan issues. You know, both sides of the aisle have to work together. We're fortunate that we have good relationships with our local representatives and our federal representatives. We're very fortunate that we all have good relationships with them, you know, not just any one member of this court. So it's good. And I think we're going to continue to support, you know, your cause. As I told you, when we had a meeting in Weslaco, that, you know, when Salinas and I went, Judge Salinas and I went, that was our trip, and y'all were welcome to participate in it. When y'all go back again, it'll be your trip, and I hope that you extend the same invitation to us, just to go as participants. But you're right, it's all about working together, and the one thing that I think I mentioned at the court some time back was that, when I did have lunch, and I go back to that lunch that we had with other South, you know, with the other Valley County judges, that's something that had never happened before, and that began the impetus for some of these regional projects. I mean, not just the veterans' issues, but a lot of issues. And as a matter of fact, Judge Salinas and I have already agreed to bet on the incoming, the oncoming Texas, Texas A&amp;M game, a friendly wager. Fifty pounds of shrimp versus fifty pounds of brisket. I don't know what we're going to do with all that brisket when we win it, but we'll find something to do with it. But you know, I applaud Judge Salinas as well, and he's been a good friend of mine for many years, back in his county clerk, now his county commissioner. And we've maintained that very cordial relationship, and I think that's what it takes when you want to work together. You have to be able to like each other before you can work together unfortunately. That's the way it is. But, but thank you, you know, and everybody else, you know, with your efforts, a lot of people that you did not mention that deserve a lot more credit than this Commissioners' Court does. But again, thank you for your kind words.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I'm being remiss in not recognizing someone as a key person that went with us as well. We have Lori Weaver, she's a city commissioner in La Feria. She also did an excellent job, of course, representing her community. And I thank you again Lori.
And don't forget State Rep. Juan Esco Batz too, everywhere. Sal, anything?
No, I just want to, again, thank you all for the support, and yesterday, we all, all of us left with a feeling that we're getting things accomplished. And as Commander Felix had mentioned, we are, now we're all beginning to work together. So I think this is a very positive method that we're, hopefully will ensure that we get that hospital done here. And my office will continue to work with Felix and everybody else to make sure that that gets done. So again, I want to thank you for allowing me to do this and for, you know, supporting my office as well. Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Jack, I know you need to go, so you want to say a few words? Jack Gibson?
Thank you Judge. Jack Gibson, I live out of Odomity City. Since it's budget time of the year, there's something came up in the paper last week that I thought might, might would be worth mentioning. It seems like with the exception of Commissioners' Court, every elected official in the county is looking for a raise. Granted, it's only $23,000, but there was a wise man once said, "If you watch your pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves." And quite frankly, I'm sure there's two or three people in there that deserve a raise. There's some people in there that shouldn't even be under consideration. The sheriff got a $17,000 raise here shortly, not in the too distant past. But the simple fact of it is that these people knew what the job paid. They ran real hard to get the job. And I think it's, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that somebody goes in, gets elected to a position, and then they come out and they want to get a raise for that position. I just kind of have a, have a problem with that to start with, but you're looking for places to cut the budget. That $23,000 bucks would be a real good start, and like I said, it sounded like $23,000. But you run 10 of those together, that's almost a quarter of a million. And I'll leave y'all in peace tonight, I've been working 16 hours a day this week.
Thank you.
Thank you Judge.
Thank you Jack. Rolfo Ramirez?
Good evening, Your Honor and public commissioners. My name's Rolfo Ramirez, and I'm a student from the University of Texas at Austin.
Tocah.
Yeah. I'm a junior, I have a standing as a junior. And this summer, I started a research project with a professor from the history department. And it's concerning the different political trends in the Rio Grande Valley. But being a native from Cameron County and from El Ranchito, I decided to primarily restrict myself to Cameron County. And I'm just here to ask of your help with my research. I was wondering if I can email each of you with some questions, and see if you guys can give me back some feedback so I can use in my paper. This is all towards a new archive that we're working at there in the department, named Mapping the Borderlands. So this research will go towards that archive. I was wondering if, yes?
Hey, not a problem.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Just, you want, my office is right across the hall, and if you want, anytime come by, and we'll get you the email addresses of all the members of the court.
Yeah, I've logged on online.
And their office number, you got it?
Yeah, is that okay with everybody?
All right. Good luck.
All right, thank you very much.
Good work.
Tocah. Presentation and/or resolution, any more public comments from anybody that didn't sign up? Item two, presentation and acknowledgement of the quarterly report for the quarter ending June 30th, 2007 on investment of county funds.
Okay Judge, there's some great news in this report, but I'm just, you all have that report before you, and I'm just going to go through some highlights. In our checking accounts, we're, we have $17 million, as, this is the quarter ending June the 30th of this year. There's 17,000, $17,512, $512,695 in that account, in those accounts, and we're earning 4.92%. In our investment pools, we're earning five, an average of 5.18%, we have $38,239,505. And in our certificates of deposit, which we earn 5.24%, we have $3,352,724. And then the overall portfolio is over $59 million. One of the things that, that we see on the chart, the next chart, is that the interest rates are going up, and the areas that affect the county are the DDA accounts are now accounts, and that's 4.81%. Our investment pool really, we're getting 5.35% now, and our CDs are 5.09%, and the average is 4.95. We go to the next page, is the interest earned fiscal year 1006 through 907. The good news there is that...
Hold on, hold on, it can't be through 907.
Well, it's the quarter, it says 907 because you have a budgeted amount. In the first column, after the, after the name of the account, that first column, it says budget per budget officer, 2006 to 07.
Is that the $16,142, like for the DANCY bill?
Right, but the figures, the other figures in the other columns are up to June the 30th.
Okay, so the 8,000...
Because this is a comparison of what is, what is budgeted for the fiscal year to what we have received to the end of the quarter.
Right, so the, so the, just so I understand this, the 1006 through 607 is the 8,027.58?
Uh...
Right? On the, on the DANCY bill, is it just Fund Number 20?
On Fund Number 20?
Yeah, the 8,027.58, that's for...
Yeah, well, it shows, well, let me, let me go through that...
That's for nine months, right?
The first, the first numbers there, 16,142, that's what the, what was budgeted for the fiscal year.
Gotcha.
And then the next amounts are what we have received through June the 7th, I mean June the 30th, '07.
June 30th or June 7?
June the 30th of '07, of this year.
Because on the column it says 06, 07.
Yes, 06 is June.
And then the year.
To the end of June, which is June the 30th, '07.
Okay.
Okay, and then if you go to page two on that, as you can see, that some of the items, there was no money budgeted, and we are receiving interest in those.
But those are not, but those are not general fund items, right?
Those are not general fund items.
So if you go to the general fund though, which is the one that really concerns everyone...
The general fund items are, the ones, the interest goes directly to the general fund are the last three, and they don't have a number to them.
That's Fund 100.
On page two, that's, that's general claims, it's payroll, and jury claims.
Well, wouldn't it be on the, wouldn't it be Fund 100?
On page one.
On page one?
Mm-hmm.
That would be your general fund, I would think, right? Right, where it says 696,000, and then over to the right, 621, 155, 436?
Right.
Right, okay.
Okay, so anyway, we're, we are, in those, we are, we're over, in all these accounts together, we're, we're over our budget by 846,996.23.
Where is the biggest chunk?
The biggest chunk?
Yeah, well, way, way, it would be the general fund, that that's the biggest chunk where we're over? I guess so, about 400, about 560,000?
You can see in the columns, there's many columns, that there was no budgeted amount. And those where there was no, no amount budgeted for the fiscal year, the total that we have received is 477,306. Okay, and that's, all of those that have no, that were not budgeted in the first column, I was able, yesterday I added those up, so you don't have that in your, in your packet. But I have a separate, I have a separate, a separate sheet, tally sheet on that.
Okay.
And it's, we've received $477,306.
Let me ask you a question, on the, if we go back to page one, right after the chart, where you have the 1006 through 607, I don't remember getting a first quarter report. Did we get a first quarter report through March?
Well, this, this contains the first quarter.
Okay, so we didn't get one for the first quarter?
Well, it's included, and I can give you those numbers separately if you'd like.
Okay. But I'm saying that we did not get a first quarter report.
Or second?
Well, this is the second, no, this is the third quarter.
You're getting the first and second right now. It's included here. I can separate that for you.
No, I just want to make sure that we're, that we're in compliance with whatever we have to do.
We are in compliance.
Well, this is, we get them quarterly, right?
We get it, right.
We're supposed to get them quarterly.
Okay, so this is the third quarter we're getting.
No, so this is the second quarter. For the fiscal, for the calendar year, this is, this would be the second quarter. For the fiscal year, it's the third quarter. I started in January. The previous treasurer for the calendar year '06 only gave you one report for the whole year.
So is it mandated that the treasurer presents a quarterly report? Is that mandated?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're presenting.
That's what he says, okay. So just so we know, that the, these figures are year-to-date through June 30th, our fiscal year-to-date through June 30th?
Which is nine months.
Which is nine months. Right?
You combined all of them?
I, we didn't get, yes, I started in January, and so I'm, I'm bringing the March and June here. Now I can separate that for you whenever you...
No, I think, I think the cumulative number is what's important, so, okay. But again, the, the big ticket items, I'm trying to figure out where we are and why we're so high. The main one, I believe, looks to be the...
I think we're so high because...
The general fund.
Because of my staff and my supervision.
I seriously doubt that, but...
Well, I seriously think it is.
It was probably, it was probably the interest rates that have gone up. But I think that, and I'm sure your staff does a good job too. But the general fund though...
I don't think we should belittle staff, they're doing a good job.
I'm not belittling staff, you're said because of your staff, you got all these overages, and I said I disagree.
It is.
Just to answer my question though, the general fund is the big ticket item that, that's why we're over the 400,000 in the general fund? That's my question. And it looks to me that it is, but is there some...
The general fund is only one part of that. The rest, all of those that are unbud, that were not budgeted, like a stated, receive 477,000. If you wanted all, one item would be the general fund. But all the rest that were not budgeted is 477,000.
Okay, but most of those are not general fund items.
Right.
Okay.
I agree.
My question is just, the reason for that huge overage in interest income is principally attributed to the general fund overage because you, the budget officer budgeted 696,000, and just in the, in the, in that first column, okay, let me ask you first, the investment pools and the DDA, if you add those two numbers up, let's go to Fund 100 on the first page. Okay? The 436,241.64 plus the 185 gives us that 621?
Yes.
Okay, so see, so we're going to be a little bit over in the last three months, right?
Right.
Okay. So I was reading this wrong?
Right.
I think you still are.
So this covers nine months.
You think I started reading it wrong?
I think so.
Why is that?
Because the DDA and the investment pool added together...
Is a 621.
Equals to the 621.
Right.
Okay? That's just the total of the, you know, of how much we've made in the two separate accounts.
That's correct. And we have three months to go.
Right, and it's budgeted at 696.
Right, so in the last three months, we should be a little bit over, but not, not a whole lot. Right? Okay.
But the last three items on here, jury fund, payroll, and general claims, those are not general fund items.
The last three are, the, the interest goes to the general fund.
The interest.
Right. Where are you?
On page two.
And in those three, we're, we're $130,000 over.
Well, that one, there's no revenue recognized for the year.
I don't understand.
Catch me? Yeah, I catch you, but I don't think, I don't think y'all are right. How come, why is there no fund number associated with general claims, payroll, and jury claims fund?
Maybe the budget officer could answer that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, okay?
Because, and under general claims, we show $97,000, why was that number not budgeted last year? Or in payroll?
Well, I defer to the, to the auditor's office, but I think I can answer your question. Those three accounts are merely checking accounts. So the general fund, whenever they're going to run payroll or they're going to pay claims, they actually transfer from the general fund to these accounts so that they can pay the bills. That way, when you have ones that don't, you have outstanding checks, say voided checks or things, I guess, I assume it's easier to reconcile that way. So when the funds are sitting in those accounts until they clear, they're earning interest. At some point, that interest is then transferred back, I assume, back to the general fund, I would assume. But they're not a separate fund, they're just a separate checking account within the county's banking system. But they do generate interest when the monies are transferred there. But they do generate interest when the monies are transferred there.
I'm glad they are, just like every account we have, right? Supposed to be.
And anyway, those funds total over a hundred and thirty thousand, so we can estimate that there'll be probably another, this last quarter, forty thousand more on that.
Do we have any accounts in which we forfeit interest earned because we're earning more interest than we're paying a cost for, like on the COs that we sold? I don't know, that would be a budget officer question?
Yeah, Rob needs to answer that.
Or Rob, maybe?
Rob, you're not in church, come up to the front row, come on.
Do we have any accounts, as an example, page, uh, well, investment strategy, I guess, I guess it's the third page of the, a lot of number pages, uh, certificates of obligation series two thousand, you know, I know that in some accounts, if we earn more interest than we're paying interest for, we have to refund, do we have any of those?
At this time, we don't.
We don't?
It's an arbitrage issue.
Arbitrage, yeah.
And we, and we don't have a problem with that at this time.
Okay, that's?
I get asked to ask that question.
I don't want to use a big word. Hey, Rob?
Yeah?
Just a quick, quick question. Um, because we're going to have these, these, uh, these over-budgeted interest earnings, uh, when, when the budget was adopted last year, you adopted it based on, on what, on a four percent increase? Is it, was it four percent?
The interest rate being, yeah.
Because is it a variable rate that, that we have with the bank, or that we had with the bank? It's available rate, right?
No, it was a fixed rate.
Okay, well, then if it was a fixed rate, and we knew what the rate was, how is it that we're getting more? Y'all just sweeping it into something else or what?
They've been moving it into the investment pools?
Okay.
Which is a variable.
The variable rate?
And, and that's where, that's where staff plays a key role, I mean, the auditor's correct, is, is how we were able to move the monies into the investment account and not keep it in the checking account, and that helps us increase our, our, uh?
Are those automatic sweeps?
That's not, no, sir.
Do you have to do it manually daily?
Yes, sir.
I thought when we were with another bank, it was automatic sweep, they were just sweeping every, every night?
It's not automatic.
No, okay. Let me ask you now, with the, with these increases, are you, on this, with this new bank depository, are they, I don't remember, are they variable rates or fixed rates?
Fixed rate.
Okay, so then you should be able to, to, well, no, to kind of close, well, you can, a little bit closer in budgeting, because we are going to have, you know, a huge revenue shortfall, okay? So have you provided, I guess, more current revenue numbers to, to Javier in terms of interest earnings?
We've adjusted.
You've already, so the numbers that he's showing already show the adjusted interest earnings, Javier?
Yes.
In the general, I'm talking, I'm talking, speaking to you about general fund, but the other funds really don't matter a whole lot.
No, we, we looked at the new rates.
Okay, but have those numbers been provided to, to the budget officer yet?
I'm giving him all of them.
Okay, so let me go back, are they, are we, and, and what you're going to talk about later this evening, that includes the new revenue projections in terms of interest earnings, Javier? They do, right?
They include everything that I have seen.
Okay, so that includes the new interest earnings, right?
Well, I mean, I?
Okay.
And because, uh, because we do do this manually, we do it, there is no sweeps, whatever happened at another bank is not what's happening now, I, I would like you to recognize that my staff is working hard and doing this properly, and helping, helping all these accounts get more money, so I, I, I would like that from you, Judge, I appreciate it.
Oh, I recognize you do a great job, but you also have to recognize that interest rates have gone up, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that's fine.
David?
That's part of the equation, but also a human factor is very important.
David, just to clarify things.
Uh-oh.
Uh, on, on your cover page, it's not a quarterly report. You shouldn't, you shouldn't have?
It's for this?
You should say presentation of a quarterly report, because it's not quarterly.
Well, it'll, it'll begin, it'll, it'll be quarterly. If, at the end of September, I'll, I'll give you another quarterly report, and, uh?
Yes, we can expect quarterly reports.
Right.
What I'm saying is that?
The agenda item is wrong.
The agenda item is?
Oh, I don't?
That the, the word quarterly is not correct, which, which okay, you explained that it's not, but it should be nine-month report.
A year-to-date.
Yeah, okay, that, that's what?
Well, every quarter will be year-to-date, every quarter will be year-to-date, at the end of that, that term for this fiscal year, it, it'll be accumulated, accumulative.
Right.
So I'm not going to report just for what, what came in during those three months, I'm going to report what, what we have up to that, the end of that quarter.
I get?
That's the way it's been, it's been done.
Well, I'll talk to you about wording the agenda item.
Okay, great.
So it won't be confusing.
Okay.
Well, I think, and, and I think just a point of clarification, that a quarterly report is not a year-to-date, it's, it's, the way I understand, a quarterly is the activity for that specific quarter, uh?
I understand, but, I understand, but I use what was done in the past, the way it was reported to y'all in the past, and I don't know if y'all questioned it at that time?
I don't know.
I'm using the same?
Sure we did.
The same, the, well, I'm just using the same, uh, uh, method of doing that, I mean, I can change that, that'd be fine, I can change that if y'all would like.
Well, it's, it's just that it was a little confusing, because it said quarterly report, and in my mind, I said, okay, that means?
Three months, three months.
Just that window of time, but actually, it's, which is fine.
And, and like I'm saying, the, the previous, uh, treasurer reported once in, in the calendar year, and he was put in the, in the, in the agenda the same way, and I was just, uh, trying to do that, just bring up the figures up to date, and reporting in the way that was, had been reported to y'all before, so, I mean, where if you would like, we'd sit down, if you want to change it, that's fine, we can do that.
What you might do, David, would be to have the quarter in a column, and then a cumulative column, so we'll know, you know, the first quarter's going to be the first quarter, that's going to be the cumulative, the second quarter's going to be two quarters worth, and then, you know, just the third quarter by itself, and then three quarters worth, that might?
Okay, I'll do that.
Resolve the issue.
Then it'd be quarterly.
Then it'd be quarterly and cumulative.
Yes.
Well, really, the purpose is, is so you know what's, what's there, and, and now you know, okay?
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve presentation.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo, to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Betancourt's, um, quarterly, well, year-to-date quarter, well, whatever it is, on county funds, uh, all, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Consent items, is there any item under the consent portion, the new member of the court wishes to take out and discuss separately?
Judge?
Yes.
Can we take out item number three?
Take it out?
Yeah, just need to clarify something.
Okay, we'll discuss that separately, any other items?
Judge and commissioners, I need, um, items six and sixteen, please.
Take it out?
Yes.
You want to discuss separately?
Yes, sir.
Item six?
And then if you could add?
And sixteen?
Six and sixteen.
Six and sixteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Discuss separately, okay?
And if you would add thirty-seven and forty, um, I, I don't, unless the court wants a discussion, but it's pretty, pretty clear, and everything's been agreed upon.
What was that?
On thirty-seven and?
Item thirty-seven, y'all have made all the?
All the changes that were necessary.
Well, you know what, let me, let me, I have, what did you all do with the deposits on that one?
Um, have you had men discuss together with the auditor and?
It's under action, it's not under?
Okay, let's leave it for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, um, which is the other one?
Forty.
Forty, you want to put that one under consent, is that all right? Commissioner?
No.
No.
You want to discuss it separately, item forty?
Yep.
Okay, we'll discuss it, forget it, local W.
All right.
Okay, um, we're going to pull out items three, six, and sixteen, and there's also a supplemental consent item regarding the Sambino Lady Pups.
And your office has a resolution, Judge, not on?
Yeah, I didn't see it, okay, um?
It will be presented on this?
How about on travel? Everybody okay with travel? Do I hear motion to approve the consent items three through twenty-three, with the exception of three, six, and sixteen, which will be discussed separately, and all travel items, and the additional one on the consent regarding the Samy Lady Pups, do I have a motion to approve?
So who?
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Ganza, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, Judge, I'd like to adjust the record?
Item carries.
On, on travel, uh, my travel to the conference will be paid by the Texas Association of Counties?
Okay.
For the skill listed.
All right, okay, do I hear, uh, W, did you want a couple of items tabled for?
Yes, sir.
Which items that you want, want as to be tabled?
I'd like the court to consider tabling item forty-one and forty-three, please.
Forty-one and forty-three, that way, if anyone is here to discuss those items, y'all can scoot out, uh, assuming it, it passes to be tabled, consideration approval of contract between Cameron County, Rio Grande Valley Health Services District for healthcare services, do I hear motion to table that item? So moved. Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries, item forty, please note Commissioner Wood's name. Item forty-three, consideration approval of healthcare services, determination in regard to the Cameron County Indigent Care Affiliation Agreement, do I hear motion to table that item? So moved. Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Do I hear motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Item, moved by Commissioner Tamayo?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ganza, any, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed, item carries? Item A, confirm with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of real property from Brownsville Independent School District for the Dancy Building renovation project pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. We are in executive session.
Just one moment.
Just one item. Tamayo, do I have a second? By Commissioner Ganza, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Confirm with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issue relating to possible acquisition of real estate from Brownsville Independent School District for the Dancy Building renovation project, do I hear motion to acknowledge reporter Mr. David Garcia?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Ganza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? If we go back to the items that we pulled out for separate discussion under the consent, item three, consideration authorization for county clerk's office to keep vehicle previously assigned to the county clerk warrant officer within the department.
Judge, we just need to clarify that we're going to be taking the decals that currently read, warrant officer, off of this vehicle.
Right. And no decals at all?
Um, is that something that?
I mean, it's going to be like an unmarked vehicle?
No.
Actually, the, the county clerk's office no longer has a warrant officer, uh, the court approved, uh, second May, to re-classify that position from warrant officer to a computer programmer, uh, the vehicle is still in possession of the county clerk's office, but it's currently marked as a law enforcement vehicle, so if they're going to keep it, we need to take the markings off and take the cage out of it, uh, so that's why we need it separate.
I want to place an item on the agenda probably in the next couple of weeks regarding unmarked vehicles, I got a memo from, from the auditor's office, uh, expressing a concern regarding the number of unmarked vehicles that we have, they've doubled in the last several months, uh, you know, so we want to get some direction from the court as to how y'all want to treat these unmarked vehicles, so as far as the county clerk, I don't think you have any opposition to having to seal the county clerk and all that, that's not the problem?
It would not be an unmarked vehicle, Judge, it'll be, uh, the sign to the county clerk's office, but that department has grown for collecting fines and court costs from one county court to three county courts, and eleven JPs, and, because you really use that vehicle to travel back and forth visiting JPs and, and family to office, so we can do a better job in collecting fines and court costs.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
I just, when that item comes on for discussion, we'll be talking, you know, probably with the DA and the sheriff, uh, and see if they really need to have unmarked vehicles, uh, there's, again, Rob, I think somebody from your office, Tom? Sent me a memo, uh, that I will forward to, did y'all get the memo? No, 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 no. I will send you the memo that I got along with the agenda item, expressing his concerns about the number of unmarked vehicles, see how the court wants to approach it.
All depends on what they're being used for.
Yeah. So anyway, we're, we'll, we'll bring that back to you. Okay, do I hear a motion to, to approve? Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Item six, consideration action to award bid and execute contract with Ram Masonry for labor to lay CMU at courthouse security wall? Hondo? Or you pulled it, didn't you?
I pulled it because Hondo, uh?
Okay.
We had spoken prior to the meeting, uh, I'm waiting on insurance policies from the contractor, and subject to those policies, uh, being shown to the legal department?
Okay, why don't we just table it till you get them?
All right.
Okay?
That'll be fine.
Motion to table.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides to table item six?
Will, will that, uh, well, I'll wait for a second.
Yeah, we got a second by Commissioner Benavides, discussion.
Will that delay the project if we table it and, and, uh?
Before we're having a meeting next week, I'm going to be okay.
Okay.
So we can have it back on Tuesday?
We'll put it back on for next week.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Item sixteen?
It's kind of, those bids were kind of interesting, were, I mean, like, one was fifty percent less than the other.
Consideration possible approval of health screening and support services agreement with Population Health Support LLC, W?
Judge, um, and commissioners, the, there are two terms that we were not in agreement, and I, I expressed that I would bring it to the court for your approval, or, or if not, you, you, if you reject the terms, but the first one is, they went, they wanted to go from a one-year to a three-year term, uh, Mr. Villarreal is fine with that, and from a one-year to a three-year term. Uh, Mr. Villarreal is fine with that, and so he would recommend that change. And the second change is, we always have a thirty-day out, and they've asked for ninety, ninety days to be able to get out of the agreement. And Mr. Villarreal was also fine with that, if the court would, um, he would recommend that change as well. Those are the only changes, and if you approve those changes, then the agreement will go through.
Could you repeat that, W.?
The first one.
The first, the first issue.
The first one was a one-year, it was suggested as a one-year term, but they, they were asking for a three-year term. And then the thirty-day termination would go from thirty days to ninety days, to give ninety-day notice to be able to terminate the agreement.
This is a ninety day?
So even, a three-year term with ninety days would be okay then?
Yes, sir. But it, it's, the court would have to approve those, those terms.
If I may, uh, let you know why I, it's not a, ninety days, we do this once a year, so ninety days is, is ample. Now, if we did this several, like, several times a year, then you'd really need a thirty-day out. But since we do it once a year, in ninety days, you should know, and we can, we can get out of it if we don't wanna do it anymore. We have another sponsor or whatever. And then the, the three-day, three-year option is that we keep the same price for three years, which in the medical field is rare that you get to keep the same price for three years.
So that window of time, that ninety-day window of time is, um-
It's good, because you don't only do it once a year. You don't do it several times a year.
I have a motion-
It's your decision, but it's my recommendation.
If we go three years, we're not only gonna be doing it once over three years.
Sir?
If we agree to three years, we're only gonna be doing it once over three years.
Right.
Instead of once a year.
No, we only do the, 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 the testing once a year.
Oh, oh.
We only do the testing once a year.
Testing. So once you're finished with the testing process, you have ninety days after that if you have issues with it, to bring that to the court.
To terminate.
Okay, right.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo to approve. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item for discussion action, item twenty-seven, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules.
Uh, judging commissioners, there were some additional, um, line item transfers that I left before your death, starting with public works.
Right.
Um, and then two salary schedules. Uh, one is for the positions for the Gulf Coast Trains Centric Drill and Stifter position, and there's funding for that. Um, the other is, uh, changes that the DA is requesting under the sun ninety, uh, salary schedule. Um, all the others are within budget, within the individual departmental line items. If you have any specific questions.
I have a question on the elections budget.
Okay.
How is it that we're going from, uh, almost doubling the mobile phone budget?
Um, the, the elections office, uh, the mobile phones that they utilize during the elections, um, are also, uh, shared with, uh, emergency management, uh, in, in case of an emergency, a disaster. Um, at, at one point, um, they were, I guess, gone into a, um, I would say like a hibernation state after the elections. They, they wouldn't be used for anything else. Um, now, they are, are on all the time, uh, so part of it is the increase in funding, plus, uh, they also added, uh, more phones, uh, so that way they have them for all the precincts, uh, so that's-
But why is it coming out of elections and not emergency management?
Well, 'cause the, the, emergency management only uses them when they have an emergency. If there's no emergency, they, they have no use for them. They, they are, uh, in the position and control of the elections office, and that's, that's where their house. I mean, it could be split between the two, uh, but if emergency management doesn't use them.
How many phones are we talking about?
Uh, I'm not sure if this, this is here.
I mean, it, it might be easier for the elections department to just buy those phones that are, like, good for so much time, like a, a month or something, like what you buy at Circle K or whatever it is.
Yeah.
You know?
Target.
I mean, you buy it for twenty-nine ninety-five with so many minutes, and you recharge if you need to, and here we are spending thirty-six thousand dollars.
I, I-
That's a lot of money.
I can speak to Mr. Ortiz about looking at that, uh, because I know they also use them, or they use them at, I'm, I'm sure you're aware, at, at the election sites for, for two reasons. Uh, one is to call if there's questions on registration or what have you, something different from what they have, I guess, in their computer. Uh, the computer now have a wireless link, I guess, back to, uh, the office and to the, to server, so that the information is, is updated. Um, and then they also have the cell phones in for calls.
But the point still remains that they only needed-
During that time, during the elections.
-the time. So, I mean, it's a matter of figuring out the window of time, and how many times per year, how many days, and then come up with a total. Um, I'm, I agree with you, Commissioner Ganza. I think it would be cheaper.
If you wanna pull that.
Well, what's gonna happen, I mean, you're, you're zapping the-
It could be done.
You're zapping the postage. So did we over-budget postage by seventeen thousand?
Um, on the postage, what was originally there, there was, uh, notices that originally were gonna have to be sent out, or based on the, the budget that was submitted last year. Uh, it turns out they, they don't have to do those notices, so they have savings there. Um, next year, they're, they're gonna have to send them out.
Yeah, but if you're gonna, so you're not, you're gonna recommend next year the same amounts as you have now, or you're gonna have the new and improved amounts with the new totals on them?
They would be the new, the new amounts.
So it's there.
Do you have a copy of that?
You don't have to.
Mine doesn't look like that. I don't have anything on elections.
What's the new one? I think he passed. He just put it in front of us.
I didn't find it.
It's okay.
You know, I think it's, it's a little unfair to, to ask the budget officer to explain some of these budget amendments that, that get turned in, because-
Yeah.
You know, the department head or elected official comes to him and says, make this budget amendment, and he puts it on for approval, and we expect him to-
The A.
I know, I know he has all the answers, but we expect him to, to be able to, you know, articulate all these issues. And I think that maybe, depending on how you all feel, is asking, really, the, the department head or the elected official that's asking for these budget amendments, uh, to come before us and explain in case there are, or at least be in the audience, to answer some of these questions. I think it's unfair to have the budget officer do this. Uh, I will tell you, and watching our, our neighbor to the Santiago County Azus is such a benchmark for us all the time. You know, they have a budget officer and all that, and they have every department go before the commission to, you know, to explain budget amendments, transfers, et cetera. And I think it's only maybe appropriate, we can start if you want immediately, or we can start with the beginning of the new fiscal year, however you all wanna do it, but I think it's unfair, because I've yet, you don't have the answers to some of these questions, and now, you're, you know, we're being asked to approve this with inadequate information. So I think, I don't think that that's fair. You know, I've been wanting you to say that for quite some time, but this is a big-ticket item. When you're almost doubling cell phones, you're reducing posted by one half. I mean, if the budget that was adopted last year, at least in this, in this area, was, was somewhat, you know-
Well, at least the, the-
Wrong.
And, uh, something as a background for the justification, you know, the justification of why they're doing it.
And if the emergency management folks are using them and they want them, they got a budget.
That's right. What do y'all think? Do y'all wanna do that?
Yeah, if you like, you can withdraw that specific one.
I think there's, there's-
And bring it back.
Surprisingly, there's a consensus on the court to want to do this. Uh, but I think it's a good idea to go ahead and, and, uh, you know, let, let everybody know, let's say, give them plenty of notice. We can start with the, you know, let's say with the first meeting in September, as an example, or if you wanna do it, to, 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 uh, go along with our fiscal year.
How about next?
I, I don't think, I don't think we have to give-
If you wanna do it, that's fine with me.
I don't think we have to give them a window of time, because if they're asking for it, they should have the justification available.
But that's, you're, you're right. But we need to let them know that from this date forward, if they have a budget amendment, a salary schedule or something, that they need to be here to explain it, they need to go. I mean, I don't care if it's, unless y'all wanna put a benchmark, anything over a thousand dollars. Uh, that way they don't have to come in for a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar item, but, uh, that's something we can discuss. I think for now, I think it's, it's good that each department head, each elected official come and, and make these budget adjustment requests, and not put all the burden on you. And I, I know you're dancing. And you're, it's hard to get a smile out of this guy sometimes. But, uh, but I, but I think this, this makes your job a lot easier, I think, and, 'cause they are the ones that, that know. Okay? So what do y'all want to do about this one?
Well, I certainly understand that on the elected officials and the others, but the ones that the county administrator oversees, which are our departments, basically, I would, I'm assuming that they've been approved by him before they come on here. So either he or, or the particular department would need to come in and help us to understand why the approval is requested.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, if they know, I mean, if, if Pete knows why they're doing it, because that's fine, but like the other department heads that are not under him, let's say, well, what is it?
Elections.
Elections.
And the, and the elected officials, I guess, they need to come and be present. No, that's under him.
Yeah.
So, so anybody that's not under the county administrator, they need to, to kind of, uh, come in and do their own, their own convincing.
Starting next week.
And, and by the same token, Judge, uh, the county administrator will have the justification for it.
The same, I mean, the same, this goes, the same with the district courts, right?
Right. Yes.
Everybody.
Across, across the board.
Okay. Right. So what do we do about this one? Is, has the money already been expended? Um, on these mobile phones? I guess we have to, do we, I guess, do we have to do it or not?
You don't have to do it right now. Well, you could be deferred till next week.
I think we have to defer that.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me hear a motion to approve all the, all the, all the, all the, uh, the budget, everything that Havietta's proposed, with the exception of the, the budget amendment related to the elections office. Do I hear a motion? So moved. Moved by Commissioner Ganza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Make sure the elections is here. Next time. A people of minutes, June eighteenth, two thousand and seven, and June twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven. Do I hear a motion to approve, or does the court need more time to review?
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Do I hear a motion?
So, second.
Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-nine, approval of claims.
Add some additional claims up, put up on your desk.
I'm sorry, Rob, what did you say?
Add additional claims, I put on your desk.
These two. Do I have a motion to approve claims as presented by the auditor and the additional ones he just turned in?
Motion for approval.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
I'll second it if I can abstain on a warrant.
You always do.
Second with an abstention on warrant zero, zero-
Second by Commissioner Ganza. Any discussion?
Abstention on zero, zero, one, eight, five, four, six, one.
Please note my abstention on what I turned in to regarding problems in Water Works. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item thirty, discussion regarding the fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight budget.
Uh, judging commissioners, uh, I left in front of you a packet, uh, that has a spreadsheet, uh, starting with the bridge toll system revenues. Let's see, there's a term. I wanted to, uh, I guess, clarify, uh, some of the items that we've been discussing over the past, uh, couple of weeks. Uh, what you have there is the breakdown of the, uh, bridge, specifically the toll revenues, uh, for the three bridges, three international bridges. Uh, the judge has asked a question as far as, uh, if, I guess, what was causing the decrease, or, uh, if it was, if the revenues were over, uh, overstated or, or over-projected, uh, for the, the current fiscal year. And what's there is the two thousand and five actual numbers for the three bridges. The two thousand and six actual numbers, there was an increase, uh, in that year, there was a, the court had adopted a twenty-five cent increase, uh, per auto. Um, those were the actual numbers collected as of nine thirty, two thousand and six. Um, for this current year, uh, the court, uh, adopted, what translated into a dollar per truck, uh, crossing, additional crossing fee. Uh, so those numbers reflect that increase. Um, the two thousand and seven actual projected, is what's projected to be at the end of this fiscal year, as far as crossing, uh, for tolls, uh, which is carried forward to, to next year, uh, which is, we're showing the, the decrease in, in revenues for tolls of seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for next year compared to this fiscal year. Uh, part of that, uh, of course, is what makes up the, the shortfall and the transfer to the general fund of the-
Where, where did that seven forty-three come from?
That's the difference between the two thousand and seven, uh, budget and the two thousand and eight for next fiscal year.
Uh, cumulatively?
Yes, between the three. And that's just for, for revenue.
But I see the same number twice.
Yes, 'cause that, it, that two thousand and seven is the projected numbers for the end of this fiscal year, that we're currently in.
So basically, you're, you are booking for the upcoming budget, what you project to be the actual at the end of September thirtieth of 'oh seven?
Correct. Those are the numbers that were compiled by, uh, Mr. Sepulveda and-
Where did the seven forty-three come from?
That is the shortfall or the difference between the two thousand and eight revenues, toll crossing revenues, and the two thousand and seven approved budget revenues, the original budget, which is the eighteen, two thou- eighteen million-
Okay, that right there.
Yeah, two hundred and forty thousand in two thousand and ninety-four. And the seventeen million four ninety-seven, eight thirty-nine. So that's a decrease.
The budget versus actual projected?
Correct. That, that's just for the, for the revenue crossing.
When does the, uh, passport go into effect?
Does that defer to September?
It's June of, June of oh nine, June of oh eight.
So, so we won't be affected in this next budget year with the passport issue?
June of oh nine.
Oh nine, so we'll be oh nine. Okay.
That's the year of the year nine.
Yeah.
Well, worst case. Worst case. Yeah, worst case, and that'll, yeah, we'd have to look at the revenues again for that fiscal year.
Okay.
And the possible impacts that it would have. Um, now that the actual transfer, um, I had mentioned, uh, with, from the Gateway Bridge, um, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in added expenditures, and that hundred and fifty thousand dollars was a transfer to the Navigation District. Uh, so that is making a part of the transfer portion, uh, to the general fund, because it's coming out of operations. Uh, this fiscal year, it was taken out of fund balance. Uh, on the breakdown of the expenditures, um, I, I decided to go backwards in conversations with the judge to the actual beginning point of, uh, at our effective rate, uh, and with no, uh, I guess, additional items that have been discussed during the court for addition to, to the budget for this next fiscal year. So what you have here is the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven expenditures, budgeted expenditures, which is the sixty-one million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirteen. And I'll quantify that by saying that's not gonna match what's in the budget book, because what's not included there is the, uh, state allotment for indigent healthcare, uh, which we had budgeted, uh, for this fiscal year. Uh, since that's kind of in limbo right now, I don't have that, um, for this next fiscal year, so that you could compare apples and apples. I pulled it out from the two thousand and seven numbers. Um, so currently where I'm at, it's, uh, sixty-two million, it's three hundred and thirteen thousand, six dollars. Um, so there's an increase in expenditures of just over one point one million dollars. Uh, part of that, uh, there's increases in departments where there's offsetting revenues, uh, and then those are listed here, which is the BIC contract, there's expenditures within the tax office of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the warrant office program. Uh, I had to, based on the current expenditures to the jury fees, uh, I increased, uh, that line item. Uh, there are, uh, right now projected increase in revenues of a hundred thousand dollars, reimbursement from the state for that. So I'm backing that out. Uh, there was a position, uh, within the tax office that was created for a compliance officer, and there's revenues offsetting that. Uh, and that is the very beginning of the two thousand and seven, uh, there were some adjustments that were done to the, just as a piece step, and there was revenues that were in, uh, recognized that time to offset that. So those came, uh, after the court approved the original two thousand and six, two thousand and seven budget. So the net increase, uh, is five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, what makes that up are these individual, um, uh, departments. Uh, the first one is the general administration. Uh, there was a majority of that is the, the increased contribution to the appraisal district. There's also, uh, the Rio Drain, um, commitment that we have, uh, and that some increase in some of the memberships that the county belongs to. Uh, the district courts, the ninety-one thousand is net of the hundred thousand that's on top. So this is, uh, additional budgeted expenditure, uh, for the jury fees. That's what they're spending, so I had to increase the budget by that amount in order to cover it for next fiscal year. Uh, the Justice of Peace Administration, uh, an increase of, of twenty thousand dollars in that particular budget, there's kind of a mix. The warrant officers are thrown in there, but that twenty thousand dollars is specifically for, uh, the court costs for mental hearings when we send individuals to San Antonio, uh, to the mental hospital. They have to go through the court system there first, and we pick up those court costs. Uh, so that's an additional twenty thousand dollars.
What's the total of that budget?
Uh, forty, uh, forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, the court approved a new employee to, for the tax assessor's office, uh, earlier this year. Uh, the funding through the remainder of this year was, uh, from lap salaries. Uh, we have to pick up the full amount for, for next year. Uh, I, I don't remember which office specifically. It was either Porterville or Hall Engine. Um, but the court already took action on that. Uh, the jail and detention center, uh, within the contract for the food services, uh, there's a three percent increase, uh, for next fiscal year. Uh, that actually might be a little bit less. Uh, I need to look for the exact date when that's supposed to take effect, and it, it could be less than that. Um, the Dancy Building increased maintenance, uh, for the facility, uh, twenty-five thousand. The jails, that's a combination of, of building insurance and maintenance operations for the jails. Uh, the semi-oannix, it's additional, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, combination of, of utilities and communications. Um, child welfare, these are kind of lumped together, uh, appointed attorneys and, uh, prosecution, uh, for those cases. Um, indigent healthcare claims, that when our budget increases every year, we in turn have to increase the allotment for indigent healthcare. That's what it's going to be for next fiscal year, a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Uh, there was a, a bill that was approved, uh, regarding the county courts at law judges' salaries. Uh, previously, it was ninety percent of the district judges', uh, salaries. That was changed to a thousand dollars or less than district judges' salaries. Uh, so that takes effect, and for the three courts, including the fringe benefits, uh, it's an additional forty-four thousand dollars. Excuse me. Excuse me. Emergency management, and these kind of net, there's savings from the county judge's office of $95,000. Part of that went to emergency management with reorganization there. I do have, within the expenditures here, the savings from the infirmary, after reviewing the expenditures that are currently being paid out of there, leaving a little bit of cushion, there's additional $300,000 savings there. And the other is miscellaneous, that there's various departments where there's increases and decreases that makes up the difference. So that gets us to the point before we are right now.
Javier, on the tax assessor collector-
Yes.
You have one employee, that's the employee that was authorized the balance of this fiscal year.
Correct.
But I believe there were other employees authorized for next fiscal year-
Correct.
To the amount of-
With that, there was-
$249,935.
I apologize.
$249,935.
Right, which is the BISD contract, the $250,000.
Right.
So I'm backing that out because there were revenues associated with it. These down here are just strictly additions, there was no offset.
No revenues associated with it.
The next page, I kind of just gave you a breakdown of, it actually ties more to the, to the next agenda item, but it's for information purposes as far as the tax rates, what they are between the general fund, road and bridge, the effective, the current, the rollback rates, and I also have this because there was discussion regarding reducing the tax rate. So that's, this shows you what a one cent reduction to the general fund tax rate generates in revenues. And there's one that shows if you use the current rate and then add a quarter of a cent to road and bridge and what that generates. I'll touch more on that in a minute. The next page is where we're at.
How about a-
I apologize.
How about a-
Yeah, there's multiple combinations of the-
Yeah, but you need to do one in which we have a transfer from the general-
Okay.
The transfer, you know, like half a penny or a penny to road and bridge.
To road and bridge, okay, reducing. I can do-
The general and-
Yeah.
Increasing the road and bridge.
Road and bridge, by which amount?
Half a penny?
Half a cent.
Yeah, that's-
I mean, a-
At least.
Do one where it shows a reduction in the general fund by one penny, and then an additional transfer of half a penny from the general fund. So in essence, trying to reduce the general fund by a penny and a half. And then do, do scenarios, one, a penny and a half reduction with a half going to the, to the road and bridge, and then one with just a, with just a penny reduction to the general fund with no transfer to road and bridge. Or do a one penny, because the idea is to reduce the total rate.
Right.
But if we can do, reduce the total rate by a penny, even if we have to transfer to the taxpayer, if we, if we reduce it by one penny in the general and transfer half a penny to general, to road and bridge, the net effect to them is the half a penny decrease.
Right.
So do the penny reduction if you can, I mean, just to see the numbers so, so we know where we're at. But do a penny reduction in the general fund and an additional half cent reduction to general fund, but that transfer going over to road and bridge. So in essence, we're reducing, the net effect is still reducing the, the tax rate by one penny.
Okay.
Even though we're reducing general fund by half. But keep in mind also that we're also shifting some numbers from the, from the road and bridge in terms of the compensation for the commissioners back with about $168,000 that the general fund, rightly so, should be absorbing already.
Correct.
So half a penny with how, how much, and then let us know, because I'm not sure what the, I know what a penny does in terms of tax revenue, but what does, what does it do to the road and bridge?
The same. A half a cent will generate about $600,000.
Okay, so, okay, now you're right.
So the, the actual one cent-
So if we reduce the, by half a penny and, and transfer it over, it's a $500,000 increase to the, to the, roughly, to the, to the road and bridge?
Six hundred thousand.
Is it up to 1.2 million?
1.2 million, the penny generates 1.2 million.
No, I think, and as Javier goes on, I think we can probably do a lot of these things, but it's going to happen with a combination of that and some, and some cuts. I don't think we can do it all, I don't think we can not cut something and do this and fund employee increases. Because if you look at the, if you look at part D on, where he's got the possible tax rate combinations, and he shows the increase, the excess of a million seventeen, 166, do you see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's, that's all general fund money, and the compensation to, now, let me ask you, the, the one million, is that already taking out the shortage that we showed on the previous page?
No.
Okay.
No, that's, that's strictly-
Strictly that, right?
Strictly tax revenue.
Okay, so then, what would be the, what's, so what's the shortage, the, the 1161 less? No, it's not that.
Well, with the penny reduction?
Or, just, just for the sake of argument, let's do scenario D.
Okay.
Let's forget road and bridge for now, just look at general fund. If we reduce the one, the general fund tax rate by one penny, the number to the right, to the far right of the 1,017, 166?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Is that after you make up, or after we make up for the, for the shortage?
What, what that is, those expenditures, I, I guess, let me go to the next page. The expenditures, what I did, I, that'll tie to what's, what was on the, on the breakdown. I, I took out the courts, the new courts, because apparently there's, there's still discussion on that. It is, does include the savings from the infirmary. So if you take the, the current revenues and then the effective rate with, including the new values, that'll generate 62, just over $62 million. The current expenditures are at 62.3 with a shortfall of $194,000, $195,000. That does include, does not include either of the new courts. I have those listed farther down. It does not include the salary-
It does not.
No, I, I pulled them both out, so the starting point is, there's, there's nothing as far as these larger ticket items. The new courts are not included, the salary increases across the board are not there, none of the requests that the court had been considering is there. So that's kind of the starting point, at a, at a deficit of $195,000.
Okay, is that using, that is using the-
The effective rate.
That's the effective rate, okay.
That's what that is. So-
So using, using the effective rate, we're in the whole-
Two million.
Two hundred thousand.
Right.
Two hundred thousand?
Yeah. Using the effective rate.
Where, where?
On, on the, is it? Where? It'll be on the next page after the, the tax rate.
But it takes none of that other into consideration?
No, that isn't-
And I think, and I think the reason that, that Javier is showing that, because I think what we're going to have to do is go item by item in terms of voting, instead of trying to vote, so having the court vote for other, all the budget or none of, you know, all, you know, all or nothing, I think, I'd like to see us vote on, on specific line items. That way, we know what we're voting for with every speci, and then we make a choice, do we want to, to give all the employees the salary up or down, then we, you know, we add that, you know, and so on and so forth. That way, it gives everybody the opportunity to, you know, if they have a special project they want to vote for, they can, if they, you know, that way it doesn't get thrown out with everything else if they don't agree with the rest of the budget.
Right. And of course, the, the larger, two of the larger ones is the district courts, the new district courts, and what the court wants to do with that. So that, that would change, you know, if you, if we address that first, that would change the, the shortfall if we fill out the, at the effective rate. If we address cuts first and then the tax rate last.
If we go to, let's start off with that $194,995 deficit number. If we go to the existing tax rate, but we reduce it a penny, we would take the $1,017 and-
Correct.
And deduct that 194, right?
So you'd have-
And that is without the district courts, that's without any raises, that is without any cuts, that is without giving any JP's, constables, anybody anything, right?
Right.
So if we reduce, even if, now, what's the number if we kept the same tax rate? It would be 2,264.
Correct.
Okay? So be about $2 million over, over this number, right, roughly. So if we kept the same tax rate, we'd have $2 million over, of which 1.3 million would be absorbed by, by the employee raises.
Almost 1.4.
Right?
Yeah.
And that would leave us about 700,000, or whatever the number is, right?
Correct.
And that's before we even factor any of the requests and the new courts.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think we can, even if we kept the same tax rate, we cannot balance this budget unless we make cuts, unless we raise taxes. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, the-
What you're telling me-
About those cuts and what different departments and elected officials has requested.
No, those are the additions, those aren't cuts. I don't think any elected official has requested a cut in their budget, right?
No.
Okay, no, these are the additions, but this stuff down here-
Well, that's what I'm saying, cutting what they've requested here.
No, that's not even added because we're, we're up here at the top.
Yeah, that, that total is down at the very bottom.
These didn't come from thin air, these are what we've been talking about-
Correct.
People wanting.
Correct. Yeah, that, that is not included in, correct, that's right, numbers aren't there.
The total you've given us does not include anything that we have tried to-
No, that, that total's-
It's like freezing, if we were to freeze everything and not-
Right. Yeah, that total's at the very bottom. If, if the court, say the court wanted to do all of these things listed here, we, at, at the current tax rate, we would still be short, uh-
Two million, $2 million.
Two million dollars.
To fund everything listed here.
You're a bearer of great news, aren't you?
Everything that's being asked for.
We did that. I also want to clarify in your new district courts areas, because the district attorney asked about additional attorneys.
That's in there.
And that's been, that's included in-
That's factored in, yes. I, I got the numbers from the district attorney's office, and that's there.
So the $2 million on page four, but that, no, but that's based on the effective rate, not on the current tax rate.
Term, $2 million in, in a-
The $2,34,000?
Yeah, that's on the current tax rate, that's not on effective, on current.
A current tax rate.
A current one.
Oh, is, is that, okay, so you're adding, is that what this 2,264 is?
Yes, that, that is, uh, what would be available, and then below that is the, actually, the one cent.
But let me ask you, just to make sure, the, the $2,34,000?
Yeah, let's see, $4.2 million here in expenditures, which sums up all of these here, you'd be short the $2,34,000.
Thank, so it'd be $3 million if we reduced the tax rate by one penny?
Yes.
Right? It'd be $3 million, assuming we did everything that everybody wants us to do.
Correct.
And if we eliminated the district courts altogether, that would bring us in short about $634,000?
Um-
I'm just taking the, the $1,004 away from the $2,34,000.
Yeah, because you said that bottom, that bottom number on page four includes the two district courts.
Yes, correct.
Have you included in what you've given us here the increased cost of health benefits to the county on the new plan?
Not yet, I, I don't have those numbers yet, so I don't have that. Right now, it's only at the $4,800.
None of that is included in here.
Correct, I don't have that.
Sure that's not missing, yeah.
And there's still two items that are missing regarding utilities with two buildings, one is Seminole and the other one is, is the jail.
You know, where do you, where do you, where do you factor in, we were in Harlingen at the building that the health center occupied, and we were in Brownsville at the buildings that the Department of Transportation occupied, we were in Seminole in a number of different buildings in which rents were being paid.
In, 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 in real terms, from 2006 going into the, the Levi's building, it's, it's pretty much a wash at this point, unless the utilities-
Well, not really, because you've just increased the M and O here, but you, what did you reduce?
Because, because part of those savings were realized already in this fiscal year. So in total, well, let me do this, I guess.
You mean to tell me the M and O, the M and O has to be increased to more than what it was when we were in rented buildings, that doesn't make any sense?
Well, let's see.
What do you mean?
Okay, here's, here's the breakdown of the Levi's building. In 2006, this is what we were spending on all these buildings where we were, I guess, what, that we're vacating. The Goldsby Building, Travis Street, Morgan Building, county clerks' records, district clerks' records, the JP's, name engineering, Morgan is, of course, where the health department is. Those were the budget amounts. In 2007, since they were, this fiscal year, they were actually supposed to be moving out at the end of February, this is what was budgeted, $238,000. For 2008, at this point, the budget is $399,000, depending on the utilities, it may actually go up between 75 to another $100,000, depending on how the next bill comes in. So net, it's an increase from 2007 to 2008, but what you're spending, 399, whereas before we were spending 407, it, it's kind of a wash from 2006 to 2008, but part of those savings were realized this fiscal year that we're in right now. So we're actually going back up, they were realized this year, but you know what, it's actually going to cost us that much in 2008 to, to operate that facility.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah. Does it make, is it clear?
It's not.
Clear?
Yeah.
Smart. Clear, smart to me too.
Oh.
I don't understand.
Well, I feel better for the question.
Well, I feel better when you don't understand.
Okay. Well, part, part of what's, what's driving up, I, I, one thing is, in that building, of course, is the, the electricity. The other is the, the communications for that building. That particular line item, whereas, you know, each department's phone bill may have been a, a few thousand dollars, that's, it's multiplied because of the phone system that's been placed in, and the connectivity back to the main courthouse, whereas before, that connectivity wasn't, wasn't there. Whereas, I can pick up my phone and just dial an extension and I can call Commissioner Garza in Seminole.
Also, what you're saying is, it's new and improved, and that's costing us.
Part of it, part of it, yeah.
Yeah, but there was connectivity in, in all the buildings before.
Correct, but now it's, it's, everyone, whereas some of them did not, and because of the phone system that's in place, correct. That, that's part of the cost.
Still doesn't make sense.
Let's try it at the store, the Harlingen property, and that'll help us.
Um, let's see.
Javier, the, the $2,264,631 that we show over on the right-hand column?
Mm-hmm.
That is, just so I can know how to read this, the, the $2,34,701, the shortage, is taking that number less the $4,299, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That number includes, well, let me ask you, are you, are you, up, where you say the magistrate courts, veterans auto theft, general fund auto theft?
That is, is not fact-
That number is not going anywhere?
No, that's just, it's just listed there because it has been discussed in the court as possible savings are-
Okay, and the reason, and the reason those are there is because we've, we've talked about it, about potential areas where we can look at or revisit, the magistrates, the veterans auto theft, general fund auto theft, and the auto allowances.
And on the auto allowances, I have, in, in kind of looking at the different budgets, you probably realize at least a 30% savings if, if you transfer it or convert it from auto allowance to mileage reimbursement.
Well, we, right now, 239,641 is what we currently pay in auto allowances?
Out of the general fund, yes.
Out of the general fund. The $71,892 would be what we would save, or that's what we would, it would cost- we would save, or that's what we would, it would cost us if we went on a per mile basis?
Um...
What's a seventy-one, eight ninety-two represent?
That would be the, the savings.
A thirty percent savings.
Why so little? Well, I mean, how many miles are you anticipating folks driving?
Actually, I need, I'm going to actually request that information from, from these departments, um, there may be some where it actually may be more, I, 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 I don't know, but I think...
You know, because a lot of departments have vehicles available, and I would think that, I mean, this is a, a, a crunch, but we would think that, we just got, you know, the county clerk just got a, another vehicle that was transferred to his department, and I think there's, there's some auto allowances within that area, and I'm not picking on the, on the county clerk, but almost every major department, I believe, has vehicles readily accessible to them, and so we just need to ask them to be a little bit more coordinated in their efforts in terms of vehicle usage. You know, if, if, if we don't, if we don't make some of the sacrifices and cuts, we're not going to balance this budget without raising taxes, and I don't think anybody on this court, at this point, wants to, uh, wants to raise the tax rate. So, even if we do, or out of that, or we don't do anything, no employee raises, no constable, secretaries, no JPs, no nothing, then we can probably balance the budget keeping the, um, you know, keeping the, uh, the current rate. But I think we are going to have to budget something for these courts, whether we do it for the full year, or for six months, or we're going to have to budget something. Okay, go ahead.
Javier, have you, have you included there for the new courts, that's for the whole year?
That's the whole year's operations, yes. Um, initially, but initially I had both years' data, uh, courts up as far as the expenditures, and then, um, last week I had the, uh, General Jurisdiction Court, uh, there, I pulled them both out, and that's to operate each one of them, uh, in, in independently, uh, the General Jurisdiction is, is the one, um, I guess, which would have been the family court, uh, which is the operations that are being performed right now, uh, so that, that one is less because there is actual, um, staff, that, partial staff that's there already. Um, so what's listed here is, uh, what has been discussed in the past, of course, the salary increases, uh, with eight dollars an hour, uh, the court, uh, transferring the road and bridge, uh, operations for the commissioners to the general fund, and then here's, there's a couple of items here that, that weren't in the past, uh, the pre-census budget, uh, PDNM has submitted a budget for, uh, pre-census work, uh, for hiring extra help, uh, and performing some, uh, some duties that, I guess, would be necessary in, in advance of the two thousand and ten census, um, I'm presenting to you for, for consideration, um, the maintenance projects that were discussed, uh, last week, uh, by Mr. Iara, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, approximately, um, and then the jail overtime, um, issue is...
How much was budgeted in the jail, for jail overtime last year? Was it like forty-five dollars?
Forty, forty-some, forty.
And now they're at two hundred and something?
Two eighty.
Two eighty, and we still have three months to go? I asked my deputy to just go ahead and, and, uh, and put into the budget a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item for, for jail overtime, it should have been done last year, um, and we're going to have to do that, just to, you know, have, you know, a visit with the sheriff and make sure that he tries to stay within that, within that overtime number, because we're going to have to fund that two eighty-seven this year, we're funding it somewhere, right, they've already been paid.
They've been paid, yes.
And so that's, that's going to go right to, right to fund dollars. Is this for jailers, or?
Just jailers.
Is this, jailers is what you're paying overtime for?
Yes.
So, you, you, in other words, you're talking about doing a two hundred and ninety thousand budget? Two fifty. Well, two fifty plus ninety that's already there, or you want two fifty total? No, no, it's, no, the, the two eighty-seven is what's, what's been incurred through July thirty-first, or June thirty-first, or something?
Through, uh, the last payroll, um, so it would have been, yeah, through the thirty-first, approximately.
They're already at two eighty-seven. I just don't understand, with any department, how we can, how can you pay these things if they're not budgeted, if they're not, there's no money in that budget, how can we continue to pay or, or expense those things, why, how can we keep doing that?
Well, and when it comes to salaries, um, I guess it's kind of a catch twenty-two, uh, in the sense that if, if they worked the actual time, um, and they went over the, specifically for regular employees, not for law enforcement, but for, over the eighty hours in, in the, uh, pay period, um, and it's in excess of any compensation time balance that I guess the county, uh, allows for, uh, they should be paid for the time that they work, if we don't pay them, um, it has happened in, in years past where they weren't compensated, and then it actually wanted, wanted up costing us more at the end, uh, to address it later, um, so...
Are there any lapse salaries that could be utilized?
Actually, what I'm going to utilize to, to cover that is the, uh, savings in the infirmary, uh, to cover the overtime within the...
Oh, but in, within the jailer?
There, there, I need to...
Like, we're one hundred percent staff right now, as far as jailers are concerned?
Um, when I, I looked at it on Monday, and there was two vacant positions.
Two vacant, so even if those two were vacant, we'd still have the overtime issue?
Correct.
So, how many more jailers would we need to not need to have overtime?
Um, I'd have to, to defer that to, to the sheriff's office, or, or to the jail. Throughout the year, they have had points to where they were...
Javier?
Is that Javier? No, that's...
I know it, during this fiscal year, they got up to, uh, at times up to ten vacancies, uh, in jailer positions.
Yeah, that means that there should be some lapse salaries there, though.
Yeah, I've al, I transferred some, um, and I need to look at it again to see what's, what's available.
My, my question would be like, how many more jailers, you know, Mr. Raina, would you need to not have to have a lot of overtime?
Well, with all due respect, Commissioner, I don't oversee the jail division, I'm not too informed at this time to answer that question, but, um, you know, just the same issue that the, the sheriff has brought up before in the past, uh, in regards to the jails, is also the, um, the staffing, um, problems that are in the jail, because there's a, of the, uh, you know, we lose a lot of detention officers...
The turnover?
Yes, so the turnovers, and just, just, uh, want to put something in your ear here, a little bug in your ear, that, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, the detention center, uh, Immigration Detention Center is going to be, uh, hiring an additional one hundred and thirty-six detention officers for immigration, they've already picked up about three of our detention officers, and interviews have already began, and they're going to take our officers, um, another issue is that when our officers are, are hired, they still have to attend a two-week, uh, academy, so it's always a, an ever-ending issue, that, that's what...
That kind of answers what I need to...
You know, that's, so that's why I can add in...
Well, I have, I have, just, obviously, to, uh, to place two hundred and fifty thousand dollars overtime, if that's one of the things that we don't want to vote on, we don't, that's why we're going to do it item by item, I think that we probably need to factor that in, because they're going to have, they're going to continue having this problem. Especially what's occurring is occurring.
Okay. Um, other than that, though, the same, um, items that were here in the past, which were the, uh, constable staff, the JP staff, the county clerk, juvenile probation, and I also have here on the very bottom, uh, there was discussed, and, you know, was the extra thousand dollars, uh, for the jailers, which was on top of the original thousand, so that's, that's there for consideration, um...
That's, that's three hundred and twelve thousand?
Yes.
There's three hundred and twelve jailers?
No, well, that includes fringe benefits, then.
Which fringe?
That's the extra thousand that they were asking for, um, and it was the two thousand dollar rate for the jailers.
Correct.
The three twelve? The three twelve includes the, the, uh, the fringe benefits related to that thousand dollars, regarding your retirement, or whatever, is that right?
Yes.
That includes everything?
Everything. Uh, so, that's where I'm at, at this point, um, on, on some of these items, I will need directions from the court, maybe not specifically today, but in the very near future, especially in, in reference to the, uh, district courts, uh, what the court's intention is on, on that, um, since they are large dollar amounts.
How are you going to budget for interest for next year? What kind of numbers you can use, you know, the, the treasurer's telling us that we've got more interest coming in this year than we budgeted for, have you looked at that, to see how you're going to budget that next year?
As far as revenues go, I can only budget what is certified by the auditor's office, uh, so whatever he provides to me is what's there, uh, I can discuss, yeah, I can discuss it with him, but it's ultimately whatever is certified.
Yeah, I think in the prior conversation, when, when David was making his, his report, uh, Rob, I think I, I think you indicated that you had given, have you had the latest interest revenue numbers, right? And those are, and if he's done that, you've said that you've incorporated those numbers into this already, so they already have them?
You've already incorporated them?
Where, where are they incorporated in here?
Uh, just in the total revenues, um, I can give you the breakdown of...
Is that, is that the new construction revenues, or what?
No, no, just, um...
Javier, I think, I think what's confusing is that the way you have this schedule, uh, it appears that what you're doing is just addressing the revenue stream via ad valorem tax, that's how I, that's how I understand it.
I think, I think that's, that's the way it looks.
Looks.
Right, but I think, and I don't know, but I, I'm not trying to speak for you, but is the, is the interest earnings or any other revenue that, that we use to balance a budget in these schedules already?
The revenues that are there are current revenues that I've received from the auditor's office.
Okay, but tell me where they are in these schedules, where all we're talking about is, um, is ad valorem, where would they be in your, let's go to page four. Is it, are they in the sixty-one thousand, three twenty-five, five seventeen?
Yes.
Okay. So that, so in that sixty-one...
Current, current revenues, where, where are you?
On page four.
Okay, sixty-one million. Sixty-one million, three twenty-five.
Yeah, sixty-one million, three twenty-five, that includes all the revenues that the, that the auditor's office has provided to you to date.
Correct.
As far as certifiable, right?
Correct.
And then the seven hundred and ninety-two is what, that's the new money?
That's the new money.
Okay.
Because that, that is not, yeah, that, that's based on, uh, um, on the, on the tax revenues, which I will calculate whenever the court...
It's the effective rate.
At the effective rate.
Correct.
Because that amount there, that you have of sixty-one million, three twenty-five, is less than revenues you're showing on any of the previous page, ad valorem tax incomes.
Correct, because that sixty-one million, three twenty-five is all revenues, that's tax revenues and bridge transfers.
Yeah, but you'd figure it'd be more, though. It's less than what you're saying on, is, in ad valorem, that's what I don't understand, you're saying ad valorem, say at the current rate, total revenues is sixty-four million, five seventy-seven, and you're saying total revenues on page four is sixty-one million, that's three million less, so I think that's what's confusing some of us.
I know it's confusing me, you know, but you'd figure it'd be more.
You would think it'd be more.
Because of other revenues.
That's correct.
Well, because you're looking at, at the current, that sixty-four million is at the current rate.
Well, even look at the effective, it's sixty-two, that's still almost a million more than sixty-one.
Well, no, the sixty-two is the, the sixty-two million, if you look at total revenues, it's sixty-two million, one eighteen, zero, one, one, on page four, the total of revenue plus the new construction money is sixty-two million, one eighteen, zero, one, one.
Okay, that number matches there, which, the question that John has, and I have, and probably everybody else has, is where are the other revenues that are certified by the auditor's office included?
In the sixty-two million?
There's no way, that's the, that's the effective rate.
Right, that's our starting point, our effective rate is the same revenues from this year to next year, so that's your...
Where's the interest income reported on that amount?
It's within the total.
It's not, because that's the effective rate.
Not in the total of the ad valorem here, go to page four.
No, I, I know what he's doing.
Go to page four.
One minute, I'll... Do the second column, where it says other revenue?
Where?
Second column.
Twenty-six million?
The twenty-six million.
It's still on page...
Column H.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the other revenue, that's what I've certified.
Other than other than that?
Tax revenues are only thirty-nine million, so not sixty-two.
Yeah, the first column is the tax revenues, which is based on your tax rate, which is thirty-five.
Column H is other, which is?
You know, what's throwing it off is that, is it, is the way you've got it worded, but I think, but I think we're looking at the wrong line, because I think your line is right, your line says revenues.
Right.
The, the, um, the description right underneath that, which says, effective rate, seven ninety-two, that's it, because the sixty-one million is total revenues, if you go to page five, you go to page three...
Where are the page numbers?
Oh, they're in the...
If you go to page three...
Other revenues.
And, and I know, I know what Commissioner Wood was, was, was saying, but the tax revenues alone, just, just, just the tax, or thirty-six million, the twenty, the, the other, the other revenues are the twenty, almost twenty-seven, that's how you get to there's sixty-one million.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
So the tax revenues are only, is not sixty-one million, that's the way it kind of looked, but...
Yeah, they're adding those to the other.
Well, it looks like a lot. Yeah, but no, we don't have sixty-one million in taxes, okay?
It's thirty-five million.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So now thirty-five, four eleven.
A little clearer.
Okay, makes sense now.
Yeah.
Column H. The light turned on.
Okay, so, um, that's where we're at, so I will need direction from the court on these items, um...
So you're, but you're, again, you're basing this on the effective rate, and not...
Of course, because I need direction from the court as to what tax rates y'all are going to consider once...
I think that's what we want to see, I mean, what, you know, because every year we tend to spend more than what we, that come in, I think the court needs to see, you know, this is where we are with the effective rate, this, the, the amount of money that we need to bring in, plus the new money we kept talking about.
Correct.
But even, even if we go to the current rate, it's still that two million dollars short, right?
If, if you do, if you do everything, listen to them.
Yeah, if we keep everything in there, that's correct.
If we keep everything, that's correct.
We're not, we're not adding.
Well, if we keep everything that's in there that's been requested, that we've kind of, my consensus is, yeah, you don't like to have time to full-time, the secretaries, employee, you know, wages, they...
But we had agreed on, there were...
Yeah, maybe what we kind of talked about.
Right.
And that includes the one thousand for, for the employee?
Yes, yes.
Because that's critical, that's a mistake.
And it includes, and it also includes the extra thousand for the jailers.
For the jailers.
I think if you ran a column showing the current rate, we'd be so much closer, and in fact, may have a little leftover.
No, I think there's going to be short, well, the, the current's short about four hundred thousand, we're still short.
Well, depends on whether or not we fund the new courts.
Yeah, and I think...
Right, two million four, exactly.
You know, and, and I think, really, we need to prepare to fund the new courts, okay? I, I think that we need, if it doesn't happen, fine, it doesn't happen, but we have to plan on funding those.
I think, you know, our request was a court creating, beginning January of oh nine?
Oh nine, correct.
And another one in January of eleven?
Correct. And I think we ought to stick to that plan?
Yeah, we ought to go.
Well, at, at a minimum, then, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to book seventy-five percent.
Well, it would be oh nine, it wouldn't even...
Well, not be oh nine, it's oh nine, yeah.
Oh, yeah, seven, eight, oh nine.
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you what, I, I think, I think if, if the court decides to do that, I think it's going to be a mistake, yeah, I think we can be forced to fund these courts, but, you know, we, we don't know for sure yet, but I think we need to go, you know, maybe do a, do a column where, let's put the, the district courts and all the related expenditures to one side, and kind of run the numbers, and kind of run like, like parallel numbers, this is with, without the court, this is with the court.
And you're also going to need to tell us where we're going to house these courts, because that's another issue that I don't think you've got here.
Yeah.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
Commissioners, I, at last meeting, my understanding, you asked me to look at that issue, and I have looked at it, and it is my opinion, you don't have to fund this court, court, either one of those courts, this budgetary year. There, it's a two-step process. The, the House bill, the appropriations bill, which was also signed into law, section four, specifies, specifies that the new district courts is very short. Says new district courts, uh, may be funded, may not be funded until it has been approved by the commissioners' court of the county, or a majority of the counties in the district. So you don't have to fund them until, it's a two-step process. First, you pass an order approving the court, and then you would have to fund it. Now, for example, the way this would work, if you wanted to establish one court for January one, oh-nine, you actually wouldn't have to fund it until the next fiscal year, beginning October, oh-eight, uh, or, oh-nine, oh-eight, October, oh-eight, for the oh-nine fiscal year. You would, however, need to do an order in a timely manner, so that there could be an election, so that before the filing period in December, you would need to do an order approving that court. Otherwise, you'd have candidates filing for an office which may or may not be funded. Now, under existing law, you're required to fund an existing office, but as of right now, neither one of these courts are existing until you issue an order. If you issued an order before December, say, order, ordering, approving one of the courts to be, be effective, uh, January one, oh-nine, then there would be a time, they would file for election, and you would have to fund it, as it would then be an existing office because of your approval, you would be required to fund it in the following fiscal year. As of right now, though, until you pass an order approving, you don't have any requirement to fund them specifically for this fiscal year.
Well, can you prepare an order for us?
I can, yeah, if that's your direction.
What?
I, I can certainly prepare an order if that's your direction.
I think that's what we need to do, but I would suggest that you call the, the Secretary of State's office, and, and get some direction from them, or the AG's office, and see if you're on target with that.
Okay.
And if you are, great, I mean, but I think we need to get it from, at the state level, to make sure we have something, because I don't want to get into a battle with, with the governor's office, that he's going to appoint somebody, and then we got a battle over it.
Well, the, the issue there, as I understand it, would be...
Somebody that's not existed, that's been approved by this court.
The issue...
I want to make sure.
I, my understanding, Judge, is that this section four is written specifically because of that issue, to address that issue. In other words, it's so that if, if the governor made the appointment, there wouldn't be any funding in, for the position from the state level, until after this court approves it, so that you don't have a situation where you have a person appointed and drawing a salary, but no place to go. And, and it even, even, so even at the state level, it's a two-step process, you have to have two bills, one of which was Senate Bill, uh, I can't, I don't have the number in front of me, but one in the Senate bill that is, that created the two courts, but then you have to have a corresponding bill, uh, funding it, or, you know, in appropriations bill, and the appropriations bill gives that authority to this court. Now, I, I can speak, or talk with you, I can't get an AG's opinion that quick, I don't think it's time to do you all any good, but I can speak with both the AG's office, their local, their local contact concerning this issue, and I can speak, yes, to the Secretary of State.
Have something for us in a couple of weeks?
They what?
Have something for us in a couple of weeks?
Well, I, I can have that, I can talk to them tomorrow, or start trying, if I can get a hold of the right people, within a couple of days, I can talk to them and see what their opinion, but these opinions that I get by phone, I mean, they don't, they're not binding on them, on them, they're just, they're their thought.
Well, let's go, let's go in that direction. I still, I think, just put that number over to the side somewhere, so it's one point four million right there. Yeah.
And also, the first year we fund it, whatever year that is, we're talking about a nine-month period, not a twelve-month period.
I mean, we, we realize we're just deferring...
Yes.
No, just paying, no.
We are not deferring the pain. We realize that when we requested that item, that that court would be operational on January of oh-nine. So we're not deferring the pain.
We want the court, but we're wanting it later on, so...
But we want it.
It's this money between now and then, that we, we're not going to have to spend if we don't fund it.
All right, well, that's the direction you want to go in.
Okay.
Okay, continue.
As far as that goes, I guess, um, next week, or the week after, I'm not sure, the week, next week, the specific item I need is, is, there's a public hearing scheduled for next week, and the actual setting of the elected official salary, that has been advertised, so we have to have the public hearing, and that has to take place next Tuesday, uh, in, in order to start the grievance process, if anyone chooses to take advantage of that. So I'll need direction, uh, in the upcoming weeks, over these items, um, the other items that the court may or may not want to include in the next fiscal year's budget. That's where I'm at, uh, right now, in relation to this. The road and bridge fund, um, you know, it's, it's actually okay, and within, with the transfer of the expenditures to the general fund, and, excuse me, on the, on the tax rate, they'll have sufficient funds to, uh, cover the thousand-dollar increase per slot, uh, and have some extra for additional road materials, plus there have been some, I guess, vacant slots identified, within the total budget, that could possibly also be used to increase, uh, road materials.
Road materials are obviously extremely important. I know, right now, we've got a request from the sheriff's department to improve the road out there, that's a Caliche road, on the backside of where they have the farm set up, and we don't have Caliche to put on that road right now. And it's due a month before the budget comes up.
For the sheriff's department?
Pardon?
We don't have an M and O fund for the sheriff, that we could, uh, because that's a maintenance and operation budget, right?
That'll be looking at in the morning, I just found this out this afternoon, that we don't have, we don't know what that cost might be, and whether...
M and O might already be allocated.
Yeah, that would be the only...
Hope anyone wants to volunteer giving some Caliche.
That concludes, uh, this part of, uh, the presentation, or...
Program, or, yeah. So I think that John's comment should be well-taken, is that there is a, you know, I mean, six and a half months into the year, everything in that fund has been spent, and right now, I know that in, in the northern, or the central area, they're working on inter-locals with Bayview, Indian Lake, and Los Fresnos, and I know Commissioner Tamayo has a project with San Benito, you know, because there's no funds to buy materials, so you work inter-locals with cities, and have them, you know, do some of the material buying, or you do the work.
We had one with the Yondo that we just finished.
I also have one that's going on with the ASD, to be able to widen the road out in front of Ben Bright.
So, you know, you, you have, you know, you, you operate six, we're kind of like the Indigent Health Program, we're running out of money mid-year, maybe we can get some UPL funds?
We've operated ten months, and we need to be doing something the next two months, and we don't have material to do it with.
Yeah, the, the court did utilize a fund balance, actually, to, um, increase the road materials by the fiscal year. Yeah, one time.
Thirty-three thousand.
Yeah. Any other questions, or need...
Just real quick, just since, since we've, since we've considered eliminating these courts, just some quick numbers here. We go back to, um, page four, and just so, just so you all know, just so you know where we're at, okay? If you, um, if you go back to right under the jail overtime number of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, can anybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. If you take in the, the current tax rate revenue, starting off at the two-million, two-sixty-four, six-thirty-one, and you, and you eliminate, or you, you, you account for those expenditures, with the exception of those two district courts of one-point-four million, by the time you get through with the, uh, the increases for employees, the eight dollars per hour, the reserve split for commissioners' operations, the pre-sensus, maintenance projects, and jail overtime, right now, we're at eighty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-eight dollars. If you just, we just do those alone, at the, at the current rate, okay? And so, that is not factoring in the hundred-and-seven thousand for the constables' offices, the hundred-and-forty-three thousand for the JP courts, the fifty-nine thousand, so on and so forth. Okay, so, if you do that, we're still going to, if, if we want to do everything that we want to do with the constables, the JPs, the county clerks, juvenile probation, and the jailers, we only have eighty-five thousand dollars to work with, okay?
At the effective rate.
No, that is at the current rate. Is that correct? The two-million, two-sixty-four, six-thirty-one?
Yeah, if, if you, uh...
Is that, does that answer my, is that the current rate?
Yes.
That is, right?
That's the current tax rate.
That's right, that's without, that, that's without transferring anything to road and bridge, without reducing the tax rate by a penny.
Right.
We're at eighty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, to do everything here, you'd still be short six-hundred-and-thirty-four, almost six-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, that if we want to do these things, we're going to have to find some cuts somewhere, whether it's in the auto theft, or the auto, the magistrate's way, unless you all have some other ideas where we can cut. I think the sheriff indicated to me that he had some ideas, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm really looking forward to seeing those ideas of cuts, um, to see where we can cut some of these things, okay? Because if not, then we can't do anything for all these folks that need the extra help.
And that we all agree that we hope that we can.
Yeah, via consensus, you know, I think we talked about the constables, and, you know, all those full-time and part-time slots, so, and I, I don't want to rain on anyone's parade, but, I mean, let's not get too comfortable, because we eliminated these two courts that were okay. I don't think we can do what we need to do without making some cuts. And if there's a consensus on the court to transfer half a penny from general fund to road and bridge, that's a half of that six-hundred thousand dollars to add to that.
Correct.
Okay, so, just keep that in mind as you all go through your week. Okay, anything else, have you?
Uh, not on this side.
Okay. Which item was that? Okay, fiscal year budget, do I hear a motion to acknowledge Javier's fiscal year two-thousand-and-seven, two-thousand-and-eight gloomy budget? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gavza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that item carries. Item thirty-one, discussion and possible action regarding the public hearing date to set county tax rates for the two-thousand-and-seven, two-thousand-and-eight fiscal year?
Judge and commissioners, uh, I had emailed, uh, you, and I also left a, a copy of it, uh, in front of you, both, the, uh, the notice for the effective tax rate that will run this weekend, uh, in newspapers, um, the total effective tax rate, I see the finger comes up, no, that's a little long. Okay, the, uh, total effective tax rate, uh, for the county, a combination of both general fund and road and bridge, is point-three-two-six, two-seven-five-for-a-hundred valuation. Uh, the total rollback rate is point-three-six-zero-five-five-three, uh, of course, our current tax rate is point-three-four-eight-one-ninety-one. Uh, so the court can adopt any rate between the effective and the rollback rate without, uh, triggering, uh, a possible petition to rollback the rate. Um, I, I'm under the impression that the court is, I guess, going to stick to current rate or less. Uh, this notice is strictly, strictly factual and informative, uh, the format is as required by statute, uh, it also includes the, uh, the debt service requirements, uh, that are paid by, uh, tax revenues, and then within some of these, there is also some, uh, revenues that are transferred from the bridge system, and, uh, from the park system also, to pay this debt. On the notice of, uh, I will need action on, on, the notice of public hearing on the tax increase, what this is, is the, uh, the maximum rate that the court is going to consider, and also notifies the public of the, of public hearings, there's two public hearings, uh, they would be scheduled for August twenty-first and August twenty-eighth, uh, it notifies, excuse me, the public, of, of course, the vote, uh, for, uh, that was taken, or that will be taken, um, percentages, uh, these percentages, uh, increase, excuse me, notify the public of the percentage increase in maintenance operations, debt service in total, of depreciated values from preceding year to current year, uh, the rate that the, the court is considering, I right now have it at both, at the current rate and proposed rate the same, with a zero increase, and, uh, notifies of the, uh, average homestead value for the county, uh, from the pre, preceding year to, uh, the, the coming year, and also, within this text down here, uh, what the effect would be if the court, uh, adopted that rate on that average homestead. The format is, of course, by statute, uh, so what I would need from the court is the rate to include in this publication, which is the maximum rate that the court is going to consider. The actual vote on the tax rate wouldn't be until, uh, September the eleventh, but what this does is, uh, schedules a public hearing to give the public a chance to voice their, uh, opinions on the rate being considered. So, I, I believe, unless there's something different, that the current rate...
Is there anybody in the court that wishes to adopt a higher tax rate than our existing current tax rate? Speak now, whoever holds your peace. Do I hear a motion, then? That, so that would be the maximum, we could bring it down.
You can, you can adopt less, but you can't go over...
Almost like, like the elected official salaries, you know, we posted the maximum it could be, but we can always bring those down if we decide to act on the car allowance issue, right?
Correct.
So the same thing here, this is the highest rate that we, that we could adopt, correct?
Without having to repost and schedule a public hearing.
That's correct.
You can lower it, mother...
We can lower it.
You can lower it, you can go above that.
Do I hear a motion to, to authorize Javier to oppose that the maximum rate shall not exceed our current tax rate?
Second.
As moved by Commissioner Gavza, second by Commissioner Wood, um, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beatrice. So you have a benchmark, you know, of a maximum...
Yeah.
That's the max, I, I still think we need to work towards reducing the rate by a penny, even, even if, even if we transfer half a penny over to road and bridge, which I think, this consensus, I think, that it supports that.
Half a penny?
At least, at least half a penny.
And I'll provide those, uh, I'll email them to you tomorrow, actually, what that translates into.
Do, do a penny and a half, of which one half goes, I mean, which, which, I just want to see what the numbers are going to be. So do a penny and a half reduction, whereas, ha, with that half penny goes to road and bridge, and then the whole penny is reduced from the, from the general fund. So we would be reducing the, the tax rate by a penny and a half, and then do the other scenario, which only one penny, which, you know, half of it goes to road and bridge, and then just do the half a penny...
Reduction with the half a penny to road and bridge.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay? Got it?
Yes.
All right, just to see what the numbers look like. Okay, item thirty-two, discussion and possible action regarding the county property that is being vacated when the Harlingen Annex is open. David, that's yours?
Judge, commissioners, um, this next month, September, we'll be vacating the Harlingen building, and I think there's been some discussion on, and direction on where you all want us to go. Um, there, there's been researching the issue as far as, um, the building is concerned. I don't know if she has anything to share.
Judge, commissioner, last week, you were asking about the county's ability to use a Realtor. I looked it up, and I sent everybody a short email, um, that basically states, if the county commissioners' court wants to use a Realtor, they can directly contract with one to do so. So, um, you know, it's up to the court which, which procedure they want to use in, in selling these properties.
Is something we have to go out and do?
No. It's a professional service, and we can just hire, right?
You can, you can directly contract with someone.
How did administrator give us a recommendation?
Yeah, I, I think, I think that we should consider using a real estate firm to market the property versus just sealed bids or an auction. I think that if we, if it can be prop, and John, you're a real estate individual, you know, I mean, you know, we market and, and get a value that we feel is fair, might be...
It, it may take a little bit longer, because, of course, if we do sealed bids or an auction, we have a definite date, but then we're gonna have to put a reserve in those as to the value of the properties, and they may not sell based on those auctions or, or bid dates. So it could be marketed, I think, much better, generally.
What do you think? Yeah, bring us, I, I think that they should, um, give us a recommendation and move forward with it.
And I would like to see if you have proposals, maybe a few proposals with a marketing plan process.
I think that we, and I agree with you all, but I think to, to keep it on the, on the up and up, just advertise requests for qualifications from Realtors.
Yeah.
And do that, and then, uh, y'all can look at them, or John, whomever. Look at them.
And give us a recommendation.
Let's do that, and someone that, you know, I guess we're gonna have to develop the RFQ, and, but with that RFQ, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna negotiate the, the commission fee, uh, I imagine they're gonna negotiate maybe some kind of marketing plan, how much you're gonna spend in advertising, things of that. Have you ever put one together like that? You might want to maybe get with Commissioner Wood and see if he can give you some, you know, some highlights.
And maybe, and maybe a timeline, you know, if possible.
Well, yeah, I think that, I think you, you need...
But then to bring it something, it doesn't always affect you.
Yeah, the RFQ, you probably came back in about thirty days with it, or less?
I think it's about sufficient time, thirty days.
Okay, all right. Do I hear a motion to, um, I have a motion to have, uh, David Garcia develop a request for qualifications from real estate agents to begin the process of selling the county property known as the Harlingen Annex, I mean, when the Harlingen Annex is open. Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gavza. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item thirty-three, discussion and possible action regarding the Los Fresnos Annex Building?
Judge, commissioners, um, couple weeks ago, uh, Judge, Judge in Los Fresnos came and did a presentation on the Los Fresnos Building. Um, Marcelino staff, uh, did, did do a walkthrough, they did, uh, look at the roof. Um, he's provided a memo that, uh, has a, uh, some pricing quotes on the, uh, on the roof, and, um, three quotes that he got, I think the first quote, um, that came in the lowest, wanted some money upfront, um, about forty percent, and, uh, wanted your direction and, and approval of going with the second, uh, lowest bidder.
Subject to legal.
You just got, you just got a pricing just on the roof, right? What about all the, the interior?
Those figures are based on the, on the roof only.
That's correct.
Yes, uh, and we have figures that was submitted to, on the, uh, to renovate the project.
What's the total price to, to fix this building? At least get it suitable for occupancy?
Um, right now, I don't have these numbers here with me. I just addressed the issue as far as the roof. Um, I have the numbers in my office. I submitted a copy to Mr. Pulver too.
Do you have, do you have a funding source for this act?
Something that, uh, we've been discussing with the budget officer, and I think he has some monies available.
Javier?
Um, I think we can utilize, uh, lab salaries from the vacant IT director's position to be sufficient to cover that particular line item.
Javier, did we not have a line item scheduled for replacement of the Goolsby Building roof of forty-four thousand, which we didn't spend?
Well, when those COs were issued, there was a total amount that was, uh, calculated for the Goolsby Building and the Orange Street Building to replace the roof on both of those.
Right.
Uh, when the Orange Street Building came in, uh, it was in excess of what was originally, uh, projected.
So we don't have that money there?
Yeah, I guess the short of it is not there anymore.
Okay.
Because we were gonna be, at that point, we were gonna be vac...
It's not there anymore.
We were vacating the Goolsby Building, so it's kinda like, well, the Orange Building was more urgent.
I'm just trying to figure out how to tell you without breaking your heart.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just looking for money.
But there's lab salaries from the IT director's position that can be utilized for this project.
Okay. Do I hear a motion then?
No move.
Excuse me, yes, just for clarification.
The second lowest.
The second lowest, and also the, um, the awarded contract, subject to legal.
Yeah.
Subject to legal. I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. David. Moved by Commissioner Gavza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item thirty-four, selection committee recommends the contract RFP number zero-seven-zero-six-zero-two be awarded to Texas Association of Counties Health and Benefits Pool using the services of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for administration services, utilization review services, medical network service, and stop-loss insurance. Texas Association of Counties Health and Benefits Pool using the services of Caremark for prescription drug administration, and that the county administrator with the advice of consultant Ken Weppe, health administrator Manobbi Arial, and the Civil Legal Division negotiated a contract with TAC accordingly. That sound like a motion to me.
Judge and commissioners, yes, it, it is, because out of all the ones that we reviewed, uh, Texas Association of Counties came and met all the requirements of the RFP, including giving us a firm, uh, proposal on the stop-loss, and so that's, uh, going through all of them, that's where we came up with a number one, and then there's a number two choice in there that has another caption on it, but, um, it's TAC on both issues, so.
So the committee's recommendation, along with our consultant, is to award the contract as, to Blue Cross Blue Shield through TAC?
Yes.
Basically? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Well, where, where is, where is one, I mean, I mean...
We didn't give names, because we're not allowed to, and, and that's part of the...
Well, I, I was just given a bunch of pages, and I don't think I'm gonna vote on something without at least asking a few questions.
Well, it, it's, let me hear a motion, and a second, then we can discuss it, and if we need to be tabled, or whatever, we can do that as well. Or do you want to table it?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gavza. Discussion.
Okay, you're telling us, proposal one is where?
Uh, proposal, if, if we go to our, uh...
I just want to see proposal one and proposal two.
All right. We go to the, it would be the fourth page.
Okay.
And it is the, one that has the, uh, evaluation of proposals by cost, and we...
The one that has sixteen things going across?
Yeah, we have a number of columns, yes.
I mean, coming down.
Number of columns coming down, yes. So proposal number one, uh, the total maximum cost for the first year would be ten million, eight-twenty-two, five-twenty-eight. That is a direct quote, uh, from Texas Association of Counties using the services of Blue Cross and Caremark for the prescription drug.
For both of the proposals?
Pardon?
For proposal one, or for both?
No, for proposal one.
Okay.
Just one.
All right. Now, proposal two is Texas Association of Counties using Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas and Caremark for prescription drugs, and using a local agent, the Cavaslo's Insurance Agency. So we have a difference in the two proposals of forty, uh, forty-eight thousand dollars, and that forty-eight thousand dollars would be the difference between a direct quote and a quote using in agent services. And our proposals, uh, as directed by the commissioners' court, was to seek proposals with or without in-agent services. So...
What about proposal number four?
Uh, proposal number four is the lowest cost, however, that proposal is subject to additional information being provided. That additional information to be provided would be for claims, and that could result in a higher cost if they were to take an individual and assign a higher deductible to that person. So proposal number four is not a firm quote. In the scoring, and, and what was laid out in the request for proposal, was that there was to be an evaluation. Cost would be fifty points, and then technical factors would be the other fifty points. With regard to a firm quote, that was assigned fifteen points on the technical side. So we had one company that gave a firm quote that got fifteen points. So when we take proposal number four, and if I go back to the first sheet, for proposal number four, it had a scoring on the basis of cost of forty-nine points. On the basis of technical factors, it had twenty-six. So the combined score between cost and technical factors was seventy-five. For proposals number one and number two, on the basis of cost, uh, proposal number one was forty-four, that's, uh, Texas Association of Counties direct, uh, with technical factors being forty-five for a total score of eighty-nine. Proposal number two had a little bit higher cost, so its scoring went down by one point, but because there's another layer of service, it was given an additional point. So then you've got proposal number one and number two on a scoring basis being both eighty-nine points. You've, you've got a higher cost on, on one, but then you've got another element of service on the other. So then that balances out, so you wind up with a total score of eighty-nine for each.
And in regards, in regards to, uh, to employees that we have that are on Cobra, for example, are there provisions made by this recommendation you have before us to accommodate those individuals?
The Cobra continuation of coverage?
Right.
Yes.
So, so if an individual is going, right now, is, is retiring, for example, this month?
All right.
And has a dependent that needs Cobra, they will have that available to them through, not Liberty, but through the new proposal?
Yes.
For the eighteen months with an NRO recovery?
They, they will provide the Cobra administration for the eighteen-month period, yes.
Okay. The deductibles on each one of the procedures and things of that nature, are they comparable to what we had?
Uh, that was brought out, uh, if we go to page two, um, I, there, there were notes that were made as I went through the proposals. Uh, these significant elements, uh, for the benefits are summarized in, uh, comment number eleven, and there is some difference. Uh, however, uh, what we're asking is for the court to allow us to negotiate with, uh, Texas Association of Counties, Blue Cross, to see if there can be any movement toward making their proposed benefits closer to what we have today. The significant differences were on the lifetime maximum benefit, you currently have a million dollars, and what is being proposed is two million dollars. That's much higher. That means that on their insurance costs, they're taking a higher risk, because they're going to be insuring for, on that specific, a two-million-dollar lifetime maximum rather than a million. Um...
And proposed, was that one of our requirements, the two million, or was just one that was up?
No, no, this, this, this is, um, an, an enhancement to what we had asked for. No, we asked for them to provide a proposal for comparable benefits to what we have today. Uh, with regard to the deductible, uh, it would be a five-hundred-dollar deductible instead of a four-hundred-dollar deductible, so there's a trade-off. With regard to the family, it's three deductibles per family, and the total would be a fifteen-hundred-dollar deductible. The emergency room copay, you currently have a fifty-dollar emergency room copay, and the proposed plan would be seventy-five. With regard to prescription drugs...
Go back to the copay. What was that?
Uh, fifty dollars, uh, for the emergency room, uh, for the facility, you would pay fifty dollars out of pocket. Under the new program, it would be seventy-five dollars for the program. Um, with regard to prescription drugs, uh, the generic copay would be reduced from ten to five. On the brand formulary, it would stay the same at fifteen for a copay. However, there would be a provision for dispensers written. Uh, with regard to the non-formulary brand, it would go from twenty-five to thirty with a dispensers written requirement.
Did they provide a list of prior authorization drugs, or not? Or are there any identified?
Um, I'm not sure on that.
Because the current plan does have prior authorization drugs.
Prior authorization, then that is something we would look into with...
Okay, well, but they didn't provide you a list?
I, I'm not aware of that at this time.
Which, should we assume that there are none in the plan?
No, because we asked them to provide benefits comparable to what we have today, and that's where we would come from on the negotiations with, uh, TAC, is we want the benefits to be comparable to what we have today. So if we have that provision...
We do have it.
Exactly. And so what we're asking the court for is permission to proceed with negotiations, and then report back to you with the results of the negotiation. This would be the first step in, um, evaluating the proposals. Another way we could have gone at it would have been, we select three or four, and then we go at three or four for best and final, but then you get into complications of confidentiality, and with legal counsel, as, uh, we were at our selection committee, it was felt, this was the best way to approach within the timeframe we have to develop the recommend, the final recommendation for the commissioners' court.
Did I, did I miss something? Do you have a, a doctor's copay?
Uh, that was the same as, as, as what you have today.
The same?
This, this is just to highlight the things that were picked up as exceptions. This, this is not meant to be an exclusive, uh, list, but only to point out the, uh, the high points.
Where are, excuse me, where are we? Commissioner Gavza asked earlier if, um, any increases via the, the employee part or our part was gonna, was going to increase. Um, have you considered that number in here? I mean, do you know what it's gonna cost us in addition?
Yeah, as, as we have looked at, uh, your current costs with your, your current insurance company, and compared it to what we see today for this best proposal, it, there would be a cost reduction, and we'd need to evaluate exactly how much that might be, but this program should not cost more than what you currently have today in your insurance contract.
Okay.
And that was, was exceptional, because, you know, everybody knows medical costs are constantly going up, and if we could stay at what we are paying right now, or less, it would be to the advantage of the, of the county.
What number, what number, what number are we talking about paying now? Are we talking about the number we used to pay, which was forty-eight-hundred, and now we're paying fifty-two-hundred, or?
We base it at our actual cost per employee. As far as medical costs, averaged out total cost of claims, cost, and then that's divided by employees, and it gives you a cost per employee.
Okay, but we're, I think the question that we have is, we contribute right now, is it forty-eight-hundred a year per employee?
I think this year it's fifty-two.
And it's... Did it go up to fifty-two, Javier?
No, it's still forty-eight. It's four, four thousand eight hundred right now.
That's forty-eight.
It's based on those figures.
Are we gonna be able to keep that same number to balance our budget in the health insurance costs?
I, I, I can't say that, uh, you could do that without further study, because at your current rates you have with the insurance company, you have a basis of maximum claim cost, that number is higher than the forty-eight-hundred dollars that we're talking about. Now, that's at the maximum, and that's how this evaluation was done, it was on the basis of maximum cost, and...
Well, we do have a fund balance, though.
Yes.
In that account.
Yeah, but it's, it's not adequate, though. I don't think we have, who, when, where the fund balance in the, in the insurance account, uh...
We were sitting at about seven hundred and something thousand, and then we got in, uh, some money from the, uh, stop-loss that built it up again. I think we have a little over a million, something.
And what, where, I mean, are we okay with that?
Well, it, it's not a, a profit. We should have at least three months. It's cost about nine hundred, about nine hundred dollars a month. We should have at least two thousand plus dollars...
dollars a month, we should have at least two-thousand-plus dollars in order to have three months' reserves.
Okay, well, what should that reserve be?
It should be around three-thousand dollars, or twenty-seven hundred.
Three-thousand dollars?
Twenty-seven, I mean, two-million-seven-hundred.
Okay, so it should be about two-point-seven, we're about a million.
Yeah.
Correct? So we really can't go to the fund balance, you know, try to subsidize the share?
But-
No, we should not.
With utilizing-
We should not go to the fund balance.
Well, what we've been, has been helping us a lot, has been pursuing a good wellness program. We were going to start a summer program, but we didn't do it because vacations, but we've got a team, we've got a committee, and we're going to initiate that. Plus, listening to this My Health IQ to help our employees stay healthier, and in that aspect, reduce our claim cost. We do have a very low dependent contribution, but trying not to change any of that and maintaining this cost per employee, we could actually end up spending less than we're spending right now.
Is there a way, and I know that I've asked for this before, that we could get even a two- or three-year actuarial on what we've brought into the health plan and paid out from the health plan? I mean, income and expense statement, I don't know what you guys call it, but-
Income and expense statement?
You know, is that what you call it?
Oh, yeah.
I mean-
That should be available, in fact-
Well, I've been asking for that for a number of years.
Well, in developing the RFP, we had to develop claim information, and we developed our claim information by month, and we have the fixed costs, and we have the stop-loss recovery.
I'd appreciate it just in a, like, a three-year, three years and a yearly cumulative total for each one of those years, just to see what our health benefit fund has done per year.
That information is available, it would not be an actuarial study, but it will be on the basis of-
On what?
Claim data that was used in the RFP to obtain these proposals that we have, so the information is here.
I would like a copy of that.
Just to see the comparison.
I think every commissioner ought to see that, at least for three years. How much back did you go for the proposals? One year, two years, or three years, or four years, or?
Uh, thousand, three.
How far back did they request?
We went back two years in the current year.
Okay, well, two years would be fine. I don't want to do any more work that's been done.
Yeah.
It's two years plus the current year.
That's fine.
Actually, almost three years, because we're at that end.
When we proceed with the negotiations, if that's the direction that you allow us to go, there will be things that we'll want to look at and report back to you. One will be a decision on what level should we use for our stop-loss deductible. Currently, it's a hundred-thousand individual deductible. That stop-loss insurance has served you very well. You've had recoveries far in excess of your premiums for the last several years. However, it appears that those claims are of the large catastrophic nature, and an alternate deductible of a hundred-and-fifty thousand or a two-hundred thousand might be more appropriate, and there are some fixed cost savings there, and that has to be evaluated against what we think could be the expected number of claims we might have at a hundred-thousand versus a two-hundred.
Can you do a matrix on that, too?
Sure. And give us, and prepare for recommendation as well?
Yes.
And with that recommendation, the potential cost savings that we would have if we increased the stop-loss?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay.
Then there's another element of cost that's in that maximum cost figure that was given to you for fixed cost. That has to do with disease management and nurse connections. That is an optional program that can work well for you, but it takes time to get it built up and develop a database to be able to use it. Also, you have this My Health IQ program that you're currently in a contract with, and my thinking is defer implementation of that disease management, and we can come back to you with a recommendation on that, but that's an option out there for you to reduce the cost by-
What's the cost of the disease management fee?
Sixty-six thousand.
Per year?
Yeah, per year.
So, you know, one imputation will cover-
Yeah, yeah, you could be right. But what I'm interested in is how this would correlate with the program you already have. Do we have some duplication between the My Health IQ and starting out this disease management? I'm not prepared for that recommendation, but that's something that in the negotiations, discussions with TAC, we want to learn more about how that program would operate. And does it make sense to start it out first year, or would it be better to defer for a second year?
Option.
It would be an option. In addition, negotiations would need to focus on the provider network and observing the hospitals. We noted that the Brownsville Surgical Hospital was not in their printed directory, however, it may be that they have another contract since that directory was published. We'd like to negotiate on that, and maybe there's some way that they could do a special contract to bring in that facility.
Is there an aggregate stop-loss amount also besides a hundred-thousand individuals?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because you didn't give us that one.
Yeah, if we go to page four that we were on before. That's the valuation for cost, where we have all those columns. The maximum claim cost on a twelve-fifteen basis, which becomes equal to what you have today, that means claims incurred within the policy year plus three months of runoff. That maximum claim cost is eight-million-nine-thirty-six-three-eleven, and that compares very, very favorably with all the other proposals that were brought in. Proposal number four that we were looking at earlier is very, very close, it's eight-million-eight-forty-nine against eight-million-nine-thirty-six. All the other proposals were considerably higher on that aggregate cost factor. And when we go to do a budget number, we have to have an eye on that aggregate. We also, in my opinion, look to that aggregate as to the effectiveness of their contracts, their provider contracts. If they feel their provider contracts are going to result in deep discounts, good discounts, then they'll be more aggressive in how they set that maximum claim cost.
Any further discussion? Anything else with Ken?
Did any of the other proposals include your provider directory? Did any of the other proposals, I would think they would, specify with a provider directory? They all did.
They all did, and really, what it boiled down to is you've got essentially two networks, HealthSmart and Texas True Choice, which is, Texas True Choice is what you're using now, the mutual use, and then the insurance companies, and we only had four insurance companies, will have direct contracts that they work through. And generally speaking, Blue Cross does well in comparison to Texas True Choice, and some parts of the states, they'll be better. Again, we didn't evaluate the discounts, we looked at the provider network to look for some shortcomings on the network, we looked to the aggregate stop-loss as a tool to determine the effectiveness of the discounts. And so, as I pointed out earlier, we have a low maximum claim cost with the Blue Cross proposal. It's next to the lowest.
So all their contracted for this proposal's already in place with hospitals and providers?
Yes, with the exception of the Brownsville Surgical Hospital that we want them to work on.
Oh, yeah, you've got that.
They're currently, I think they're currently in, working with us right now.
Is that right?
Yes.
They're with us right now, but they were not listed on theirs, so we're going to ask them, if we negotiate to put them on-
That'll be part of the negotiation.
Because they're currently, I know some employees who have been there.
Yeah, they're currently on our Mutual Omaha.
Yeah.
Mutual Omaha also has their own provider listing, and Blue Cross and Lucio has their own. So we're going to ask them to include the surgical hospital.
That'll be part of the negotiation.
You're right, yes.
Any further discussion? We had a motion, a second. I assume that your motions were to take these selection committee recommendations and give them the opportunity to negotiate a contract with TAC accordingly?
On proposals one and two.
On proposals one and two, is that correct?
Yeah, that was my motion.
Does your motion, does move by Commissioner Tamayo, also by Commissioner Gatsa, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-five, selection committee recommended the contract RFP number zero-seven-zero-six-zero-two be awarded to interface EAP Employee Assistance Program, and that the county administrator, with the advice of the consultant, can with the health administrator Manuel Villarreal and the civil legal divisions negotiate a contract with interface EAP accordingly. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo?
That's your recommendation.
Yes, right. Do I have a second by Commissioner Gatsa?
Yes, please.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-six, discussion of possible action on soliciting proposals to allow a concession for an automatic teller machine at Isla Blanca Park. Do I hear a motion to authorize Mr. Mendez to solicit proposals?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, signify by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion?
Are these going to be from banks?
I would assume so.
Or is it private, or anyone?
I would assume it's from a bank, right?
Yeah, that's true.
Don't we have, well, why is it that we don't, we can't use our existing depository?
And that's where I was going to lean towards, should we not allow our existing depository contractor to provide, unless they don't provide the service?
Well, the reason I brought it forth, because Texas State Bank doesn't have a bank on the island, and they're the ones who approached us and see if we could put a ATM machine outside of our office, and so that's why when we-
Yeah, but they are depository, is there a provision in that contract, Bilvia, that could allow for this to happen?
No, there's nothing in the contract that talks about ATMs or allowing the use, and the reason why I think we advised how they had to go out for, or solicit RFPs, is because they don't just want to put like an ATM, they want to like build a little, kind of like a little ATM drive-up, you know, the way banks have outside their banks, and so this would actually take up some space.
Well, this is ATM in the office. I mean, that's the way it's worded. They want to put an ATM in the office.
Just at the office, at the-
In the background, what they want to do is they want to put a temporary machine inside the office, but they want to put a permanent ATM machine outside.
Oh, so it's temporarily inside?
Right, right. They just plug it in, they, you know, hook up their phone line to it, and so on.
Is it supposed to be inside your office or adjacent to your office?
Well, no, they want it inside of our office.
Inside your office, it's only available during the time that you're open, obviously, right?
Correct, temporarily, but then they want to- And I say temporary because it's not anchored down to the building or anything like that, it's just, they're just going to sit there. Now, the one that they want to do outside, that's why I'd ask Bilvia. Right, correct.
But they really want a leased property to put in a drive-up?
Correct, that's right.
Well, just do one or the other, I mean, why do both?
Well, one doesn't provide them twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week access.
And that's what people want.
Yeah. It would mean it would need to be a drive-up and outside eventually. They're doing the interior as a stop-gap method to get started, I would assume, so they could do one outside for a drive-up, so I think we ought to go out for proposals.
It's a good service, you know.
A proposal can be worded any way we want it.
Okay, do I hear a motion to authorize Javier to request proposals for a concession for an automatic teller machine outside of the Isla Blanca Park office versus inside?
Or at the Isla Blanca Park.
At the Isla-
Or at the Isla Blanca Park.
I had made that note, so I will develop a note.
At the office, the park office, though, as opposed to-
Inside.
Just at the park.
Well, the way this is worded, is at Isla Blanca Park, and then on the background, it talks about-
Inside.
Inside, so which one is it?
Well, what they did was they approached, they want to put one inside, but when they were talking to us about that, they want to put one also outside, so-
But there or someplace else within the park?
No, no, outside of, in the parking lot.
In the parking lot.
Of your office.
Of our office, correct.
That way, people don't have to pay a toll to get through the gate, to go to it, if they were to put it on the inside of the gate.
That's probably the reason for it.
Yeah, put it inside.
Put it inside the gate, that's the way.
Well, I think, did you move to-
The proposal is for, not for inside the office-
But at Isla Blanca Park.
At Isla Blanca Park, and then the way they write the proposal will designate.
Where?
Where. That's how I'm seeing it.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Tamayo to ask Mr. Mendez to request proposals from banks to provide for an automatic teller machine somewhere in Isla Blanca Park?
Well, I don't see banks anywhere there, though.
Well, who else would have automatic tellermachines if not banks?
Well, if you buy one, you could have one.
Card companies?
[laughing] Please, Ken.
I don't know, I don't use them.
Okay, so then, do you want to just do it to where anybody can provide an ATM?
Yeah.
Okay, that was your motion, Commissioner Tamayo?
I don't think anyone else is going to do it except banks.
I wouldn't think so, but, all right.
No, I'm staying with it, with banks.
Okay, the motion was to, so this proposal from banks, to provide an automatic teller machine in Isla Blanca Park. Move by Commissioner Tamayo to have a second. Second by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-seven, consideration for the following concession agreements at Isla Blanca Park Beach Snacks and Jetty's bait stands. I've already signed those, I looked at them, they looked okay. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-eight, consideration possible action on allowing restaurant owner to distribute meals for the elderly at the Santa Maria Community Center, San Pedro's Learning Center site, and the La Feria Learning Site?
Judge Commissioners, I had emailed everyone a letter from Mr. Frank Garcia. He owns a restaurant in La Feria, it's called City Market Restaurant. What he wants to do is he wants to provide meals that are already prepared and serve them at our center to the elderly, and the time, it's going to be for a one-year term, and he's going to be, the lunches we serve from eleven to twelve, and it'll be Monday through Friday, so he'll need our center from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty set up, and then, you know, break down, and then take his trash and everything.
But he would take care of all of that.
I'm sorry?
He would take care of all of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I think that we need to charge a fee because of electricity being used, perhaps, you know, that's what I would-
Communities?
Is he looking at proposing some insurance coverage?
Well, they're supposed to screen, but I think there should be a fee. I think it's a wonderful service, and this community is definitely needed, but I think there needs to be a fee to cover, to cover Francis electricity and so on.
Okay. Well, I think, before we go down that path, I mean, is there a reason why, I mean, if he's going to be charging for these meals?
No, they're free.
They're free.
Do you get a grant?
They're free to the elderly, but it's going to be like a grant, he's getting, I think, through USDA.
Subsidized. But he does not have a nonprofit organization.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, if it was nonprofit, I can see, but I think we need to charge.
He's got a contract to provide, I'm looking for a place to do it at.
Right.
And insurance would be an issue, I think, and-
Why would we not request proposals on something like this? I mean, I don't know, I'm not suggesting it, I'm just saying, why would we not do that? Would it, Rudy's wanted to go and provide services, or Amelia's, or Jayna's, or-
They would need to have the contract to provide them for free.
And there may be others out there.
Yeah, I don't have the contract, I don't-
Well, I think the only, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't gotten into this, but from past experiences about elderly being fed, this gentleman must have gotten a grant, or some type of grant.
There are contracts out there for him.
Exactly, and so- Exactly, and, and so-
It's like Amelia's advice.
Yes, exactly.
Meals don't wheel, stuff like that.
And I don't have a problem with that, except that he needs to pay a fee.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a, I mean, you know, you're right, what if somebody gets sick, or, or latulism or something, I mean, what exposure do we have, or none? Because we're, I mean, I think your point was, do we have some kind of insurance? I imagine the insurance is not for that, it's probably for, you know, slip and fall or whatever, but what are we gonna do to safeguard the elderly from getting sick?
I think that's part of the, let's see, what, what is your, I think that we can approve it pending legal getting involved and, and, and a, a, what is it, a proposal, what do we call it? That will cover the negotiations on, on contract, rather, with, with contract.
Right.
To cover a fee, a fee for, for using the, the facility and, uh, insurance coverage. Maybe, maybe that's included in his grant, you know, I don't know.
Have you seen the grant?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Have you looked at it? I mean, I still, even, if, even if it's a grant, he's, he's making, he's making money on this. I'm just wondering why we would not, if that's a sort of one to provide, why not throw it out? Anybody that want, any nonprofit that wants to do that and provide the services at these locations, I mean, I don't know why we would wanna-
We could, you know, I was talking to Mike about this, and, you know, Mike, you know, when we first talked, when I first talked to Mike, Mike was saying, you know, is there gonna be a fee? And I, I didn't think that we'd, that we would collect a fee, since we're providing a service, you know, for feeding the elderly. But if we do wanna do that, then we probably wanna, you know, bid it out, um, or, you know, RFP it out or whatever.
Well, we can, we can do that, as long, I just, it is a good project, I know that there's a need in those, and, and we can go that route, uh, but I think-
And if he's the only one, that's fine. But we don't know till we, till we talk, what do you think? Right? Okay, so then, you all wanna do that then? Do you wanna have Javier maybe develop, along with, with Mike Forbes, uh, an RFP for this?
I don't have a problem with that.
Can I take this, or we need to do that? Okay?
But definitely whomever it is, we need to make sure that we get covered with some kind of fee.
Judge Commissioners, but do you wanna limit the RFP for just allowing the use of the space, or do you wanna state, or have the RFP say use, you know, for this only, to, to be used for only this purpose?
For this particular purpose. Because we don't want to start, we don't, we don't wanna start, uh, renting or letting people use a facility for all kinds of things. I mean, this is, this is a good, I mean, the, the concept itself, I approve a hundred percent. Uh, I think it's something that we can, that will serve our communities, and it would be an initial service that's being given to our community. Uh, so I, I would, I would go with just this specific focus.
And I'd like to know if these people are gonna get the free meal, or have to sign up, or is just the criteria elderly, meaning sixty-plus, I might drop in for lunch.
You're, you're almost there. I'll join you. Well, hold on, okay, well, the item is to allow the restaurant owner to distribute meals for the elderly, and I don't know, so on that one, we are going to, I guess, table, and then bring back next week another agenda item requesting proposals to do this in those locations, okay?
Following our-
Okay, do I hear a motion to table item thirty-eight?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-nine, discussion of possible action regarding the county, state, and federal, let's say, of agenda?
Judge Commissioners, there's nothing to report.
Move to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Garcia's flaming report. So, moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item forty, consideration possible approval of an agreement with the University of Texas Health Science Center for Medical Mobile Clinic.
Judge Commissioners, good evening. Um, this agreement will allow us to continue, uh, to work with the University of Texas Health Science Center regarding the use of their medical mobile unit.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wood for approval, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item forty-two, consideration of build the color scheme for the boat ramp restrooms at Isla Blanca Park.
Judge Commissioners, David Mendez has the, uh-
Judge Commissioners, uh, basically what we're doing to the restrooms is matching the colors that are out there right now. The dominant color is gonna be the royal blue base, the doors are gonna be royal blue also, interior's gonna be, uh, off-white, and so are the walls on the outside.
All right, do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Thank you.
Last item, discussion of possible action regards to current minimum requirements for quality and capacity of county roads under the Cameron County subdivision rules and regulations?
Uh, good evening, Judge, and, and county commissioners. Uh, we brought this item back to the court, uh, as you recall, last week, there was some, some questions or, or, and, or concerns of what our minimum requirements were for quality, uh, or standards for, minimum standards for the quality of county roads leading to and/or fronting subdivisions. And, uh, I just wanted to bring back some information to you, and this is not an action item, it's just gonna be a discussion. Uh, I did pass some information to you that, we left some sheets out on the, on the original submittal or, uh, package of information. So, if you, if you have something like this in front of you, uh, we can look at the, uh, the requirements under the, uh, state statutes for, uh, roads and, uh, under local government code, uh, section two-thirty-two point zero-two-five, uh, subdivision requirements, uh, under that section, uh, item-
What page is that?
Pardon?
What page number is that?
It'll be page thirty-eight, right in front of your-
That first page, okay.
Yes, sir. Page thirty-eight, uh, item number four, it does say that, uh, the Commissioners Court shall for each subdivision adopt, adopt based on amount and, um, and kind of travel over each street or road in a subdivision, reasonable specifications relating to the construction of each street or road. And we have adopted that under, under, under our, uh, current subdivision rules and regulations.
So, what does that mean, in what we had a discussion on last week?
Well, basically, my understanding is that, that the court can adopt, uh, rules and regulations to, to, to bring standard, uh, to, uh, uh, road construction or design of road systems.
We've always do that, though.
We've always had that.
I think the question was-
Getting to the- Well, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna lead on to, to that, but, but you need to know what the, but the state requires.
Take the expressway.
Okay.
Don't take the frontage roads, okay?
Okay, I understand that. Right, I'm staying, apologize for that. I understand. Uh, I, uh, page forty-one, second sheet, um, section two-thirty-two point zero-three-two, subdivision regulation, county authority. Again, there's another statute that, that gives, uh, the, um, the Commissioners Court shall adopt regulations setting forth requirements for sufficient and adequate roads that satisfy the standards adopted by the county, which we have adopted, uh, our, our current standards. That's another statute that gives us the, the ability to do that, or the court does. Uh, page forty-two, under the same local government code, uh, section two-thirty-two point zero-three-one, I'm sorry, three-two, item number four, or number three, I'm sorry, in the right-hand, right-hand column, uh, it says there that, uh, if a subdivision having an approved plat for a subdivision shall, uh, furnish roads satisfying the minimum standards as adopted by the county. So, basically, what we're saying that, uh, there is state statute that allows, uh, uh, for the county to implement and, uh, and, uh, approve standards for roads. Um, the third page, I, uh, which is page sixty-seven, is just a portion of chapter five, uh, of our adopted rules and regulations for subdivision design and minimum standards. Uh, section one, uh, D five, it tells you there that what, that the county can, has, uh, has, uh, has ability to, to, to implement quality and capacity of public roadways leading to proposed development. I think that was the question last time, what is the quality of road that the, the county requires, uh, as a minimum for a, a good quality road? And if you go to, um, let's see, page sixty-eight, it, it gives you the different requirements that we have, but actually, the one we wanna look at is page sixty-nine, item number twelve, and there it tells you, under our current rules and regulations, existing street quality, a subdivision fronting on an existing county road or public dedicated road shall be improved to Cameron County minimum standards as shown on appendix A two-point-one-six, seven, but it's actually one-six, it's a typo in that. And if you look at the back page of this, page sixty-nine-
It's two-point-one-six?
Yes, it's narrow.
I'll add, and we need to amend that, but it's point-one-six.
What we have there, uh, under two-point-one-six is a, 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 um, typical half-section of a road, a road section, and there you can see, if you look at the top of the, of the sheet, they'll have thirty feet, which is our minimum right-of-way, or sixty feet times two, so it'd be sixty foot right-of-way. But the actual road, you can see that if, if the minimum is twelve and a half feet for the half-section, which will be twenty-five feet, uh, that's the minimum requirement of the, for a caliche road with an additional, uh, uh, six inches of stabilized subgrade, lime-stabilized. And that's the minimum that, that the county imposes on all subdividers that, uh, uh, they have roads leading on to that particular subdivision, uh, that, uh, if you have a road, uh, road, it needs to be, be improved to a minimum of a six-inch caliche road, twenty-five foot wide. Now, if you have less than sixty feet of right-of-way, and say the right-of-way is forty, then we, we work with the developers, and, and the minimum is twenty feet, twenty feet wide, six inches in depth. And so, the question the Commissioner, uh, Wood had for us last time was that La Cantada particular subdivision does not meet that requirement, it, it, it only has like a maybe twelve-foot caliche road, and it's not all complete. So, what we ask of this developer is that it does meet this requirement, and so he will, he will, uh, improve that road to at least, uh, twenty-foot wide.
Rego Road.
Yes, sir, Rego Road. For the length of the, uh, leading on to the subdivision, so. The minimum requirement for the county right now, at this point, is, is that we have, uh, a minimum design of, of six inches of, I mean, twenty-four, uh, twenty-five-foot caliche road, six inches in depth, with, with a six-inch stabilized subgrade. Uh, now, in the last two, three years, uh, we have made improvements to this, uh, policy, and, and you'll notice that we have bought additional equipment, and we are doing, uh, what we call a two-course overlay on our caliche roads, and only even two hot-mix overlays. And, and so, we don't require that of the developer, but on roads leading to the subdivision, but for our own, uh, quality control and all of that, we are improving our construction methods, and, and has helped us, uh, pretty well on, on more, more, more durable road and more, have more life expectancy out of it. So, the last two, three years, I think we made that, uh, changes to our, to our construction methods, and I think it's helped us pretty well.
So, the answer to our question was, we will have a caliche road leading to a nice subdivision?
Yes.
If the developer wants to put it in.
If.
And he, and he has to put it in to get a subdivision approved.
That's correct. Uh-
And, and that's all we can require them, uh, minimum standards. But we still need to help those folks who buy out there understand that that's what they have.
Yes.
Now, during the week, I got a call from a lady and her husband, who built some rental houses on a road, where a year and a half ago, we paved to a point of where the last road, the last house was.
Mm-hmm.
They've built some rental houses beyond that last house, and they think we need to come out and pave it, folks.
You should.
Not, you know, the money's not there.
I understand, but that's the information I wanted to bring back to the court.
I think those are just the minimum, uh, requirements that we have, and, and, uh, later on, I was talking to Livia, we wanna change some of these, uh, requirements, and we can always do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to acknowledge report.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa, to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Nohosa's report. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.